Well, good evening, everybody. It is windy out there. Wanted to let everyone know that Councilmember Pease is informing the council that she will not be able to participate in person. She'll be participating virtually due to an illness. And she is confirming that no one over the age of 18 is present with her in the room. Do you confirm that, Councilwoman Pease?
That's correct. Due to illness, I'm participating virtually and there is no other person in the room with me tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. So we'll go ahead and do we need to have a vote to approve that by consensus? Okay. Is Council okay with Councilwoman Pease? Wonderful. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Michelle Shoresman, will you please lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance? And before we get started, just kind of wanting to remind everybody, we're still in February, Black History Month. I've been hosting some information on my social media and the city has been doing some great information also on social media and the website. And so thankful for Cal Poly and the many events that they've been putting on as well as Cuesta College. So just wanted to highlight that. And we'll move forward to Greg Herman. He will be introducing our new D Diversity Equity and Inclusion Manager, Nestor Velos Pasalagua.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am here to introduce Nestor Velos Pasalagua as our new DEI manager in the City Administration and IT Department. In that role, he's going to have a bunch of different responsibilities. That includes leading the city's Office of DEI, all of the associated major city goal work tasks with that. He'll be the staff liaison for the Human Relations Commission, then he'll also lead our internal DEI committee to try and build on the leverage that we've got within our own organization. Nestor comes to us from the county of San Luis Obispo, where he was actually the DEI manager in the County Behavioral Health Department and held several roles at the county prior to that. He has degrees in both, from both Cuesta and Cal Poly and master's degrees in public policy and legal studies. We are super lucky to have Nestor as a part of the team, and I'm happy to invite him up to say a few words.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stewart and Councilmembers. My name is Nestor Velos Pasalagua, and I am the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Manager. I am excited to be here and to be part of the continued efforts of the city to create a more inclusive, equitable, and safe space for everyone. It's a quick background. I have over eight years of experience doing cultural humility, cultural competence, social justice work in government settings and in always creating transformational change and with the goal to update policy processes. And now at the City of Slow, I look forward to implementing the major city goals and working in collaboration with the community and partners. Thank you for the warm welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you so much. And now will City Attorney Christine Dietrich please introduce the Deputy City Attorney, Sadie Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will first start by thanking the council for adding last year authorization for the city attorney's first ever third attorney. So historically, you have been served by two, myself and an assistant city attorney. At the end of November, the city attorney's office hired its first ever deputy city attorney, Sadie Simmons. And Sadie came to us directly from Slow Legal Assistance Foundation here in the city, where she was a staff attorney assisting low-income clients. Prior to that, she received her undergraduate degree from UC Berkeley, went on to graduate from UC Davis School of Law, the same law school as our assistant city attorney. And after law school, she worked for several years in the Bay Area and in various public defender offices and the nonprofit Legal Assistance to the Elderly, Inc. Sadie's return to Slow was also a return to home, having graduated from Slow High in 2009. And she will be recognized next month by the Local Women Lawyers Association with their Rising Star Award, which is given to a female attorney working in Slow County for less than seven years, who has worked to promote the advancement of women within the community. So we're really thrilled to have such a wonderful local talent in our office and to benefit from the experience of an attorney with such an excellent track record of public service, law practice, as well as commitment to serving traditionally underserved communities. So please welcome Sadie, and I will let her say a few words as well.
Good afternoon, Council. Yes, she provided a great background. I just wanted to say that I am really happy to be here. Been here for about three months, and it seems like most of the time I'm learning from our staff, but hopefully soon will be a resource to our staff and as well to the council as we work to serve this great community. Like Christine said, coming back doesn't mean no return to home, and I'm just really happy to be here, happy to be working and serving in my hometown. So yeah, thanks for having me back.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Well, now I get to present a proclamation declaring the month of February as Teen Dating Violence Action and Awareness Month to Lana Goodman, who is the youth volunteer for Lumina Alliance. I will share a few of the stances and then provide the proclamation. So whereas Teenage Dating Violence Action and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that dating violence is widespread and impacts very, or sorry, every young person in San Luis Obispo. Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment for young people affected by teen dating violence with crisis intervention, counseling, legal services, safe emergency housing, and local community prevention programs such as Close to Home. The establishment of Teen Dating Violence Action and Prevention Month will benefit schools, communities, families, and all youth. The City of San Luis Obispo joins Lumina Alliance and Close to Home and other advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent dating violence and acknowledges that each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now, therefore be it resolved by I, Erica A. Stewart, Mayor of the City of San Luis Obispo, on behalf of the City of San Luis Obispo and my colleagues, in recognition of the important work done by dating violence programs, to hereby proclaim the month of February as Teen Dating Violence Action and Prevention Month and supports communities to empower teens to develop healthy and violence-free relationships throughout their lives. Lana, will you join me at the podium?
One in three teens experience dating violence before becoming adults. With the number so high, it is clear that change is vital. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, which shines a spotlight on the issue and encourages youth and adults alike to advocate for the prevention of dating abuse. This proclamation is a significant step in the right direction, and I am really glad to see this part of the process for a safer community. I'm a youth volunteer for Close to Home, an organization under Lumina Alliance that focuses on bringing positive change by identifying issues in the community and working to combat them. One of our main focuses is the prevention of intimate partner violence. It is essential that we create an environment where people feel safe to come forward about their experiences and be uplifted and heard. Healthy relationships must be prioritized, and the education of the public is key. That is why this proclamation is so meaningful. At Lumina Alliance, we work to spread awareness about sexual assault and how to prevent it, and new volunteers are always welcome. We hold the power to make this community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm excited to have the childcare study update from First Five San Luis Obispo. I will be joined by Wendy Wendt from First Five and also Chris Rodebush and her team. And we're, excuse me, so we're very excited to hear your presentation. And I think Greg is going to be getting that up onto the screen.
Okay. Terrific. My name is Wendy Wendt. I'm the Executive Director, First Five San Luis Obispo County. And it is my pleasure to be here with a team of colleagues who, together with partners in the City of San Luis Obispo, County San Luis Obispo, San Luis Coastal Unified School District, Cal Poly, and many other partners, both public and private, are collectively taking on the challenge and the opportunity to advance and expand childcare capacity in San Luis Obispo County. This council and the staff of the City of San Luis Obispo have been incredible partners for a long time now. I believe it was June of 2019, there was a city council meeting, and it was probably the perhaps third or fourth of several city council meetings when Chris Rodebush and several other members of what's called the We Are the Care Initiative would come and make public comment about the challenges around childcare capacity in this community. And something about that meeting in June of 2019, I think you were there, Mayor Stewart, lit a fire and initiated a really deepening partnership with the City of San Luis Obispo and First Five San Luis Obispo County, as well as our partners at Capsulo's Childcare Resource Connection and what is now known as, used to be known as, the Childcare Planning Council for San Luis Obispo County. Newsflash, it is now known as the Early Childhood Education Care and Education Council of San Luis Obispo County. We all came together as a team to take a deeper look at what opportunities there are for local governments, as well as other local public agencies such as a CSU, or a community college, or a school district, to advance, collectively advance capacity around childcare. Now, you'll hear in this conversation today, and just keep in mind, both council members, staff, as well as members of the public, that childcare is such a big challenge, that there is no one entity, there is no one sector that can possibly lift up and solve the problem around childcare in our communities, both in San Luis Obispo County as well as across the country. So it's really, it's the ultimate example of a shared lift. So we're going to share with you some of the things that we've learned over the course of this last couple of years of deepening partnership with the city. And for the moment, I'm going to pass this on to Rochelle Bole, who is the coordinator of the Early Care and Education Planning Council for San Luis Obispo County, and then I'll be back.
And yes, our name got longer and harder to say. But yes, so as Wendy was talking about, we started all of this back in May of 2019 with our Where's the Care Town Hall, which I believe some of you were at, but basically kicking off what can we do about this childcare crisis. As you know, and you've heard many, many, many times, childcare is one of those essential programs and essential pieces of our economy and of our children and families as we're continuing on through our society. And so when we're looking at how do we even look at tackling this childcare crisis, we realize this is more than just a childcare issue problem. It's not just more teachers and we need to equip our teachers. It's how do we expand what we're looking at? Who's at the table? So with the Where's the Care Town Hall back in May 2019, which seems forever ago, we started embracing the idea of new partners at the table, meaning our business community, our civic engagement and our civic leaders, and really expanding who was there. And so that led into our Where's the Care Initiative, which is still going strong in terms of how we can engage unusual partners, at least unusual for us. We don't normally come to city councils looking for how do we support and have a, build a bridge? We don't normally go to private businesses and say, how do we build a bridge around childcare? We're really stepping outside of our comfort zone in that arena. We usually look at just early childhood and how that actually works. It's really the business community too, as we're looking at all of this. So with our We Are the Care Initiative that is still going, we started with public comment as Wendy was talking about. And really, that again was a stretch for all of us of civic engagement and where local government can play a role in all of this. And so through all of that public comment, you heard us. So we went to every single city, the Board of Supervisors, over and over and over, really just kind of building our team of just parents, educators, people that are also in the field and part of the infrastructure, but really asking, how do we build this bridge? You heard us and actually put some money behind all of that within the childcare study. And that's where I will hand it off to Wendy of how that's gotten us to where we're at now. You heard us, so thank you.
Greg, could you help me by advancing to the next slide? Thank you. I failed in my mission. Thank you. So these are the four partners, as I mentioned before. Each entity contributed $20,000 to embark on a shared study. So we launched into this exercise together with a total budget of $80,000. And what that has bought us so far, in addition to some very, I would say, important relationship building across the four agencies and conversations that have gone beyond just studying the issue to actually problem solving and action planning in the process. And you'll hear a little bit of those examples from Chris in just a few minutes. But we did also yield two really seminal reports that I think bring us some valuable information, the first of which was done by a group, nationally known organization called the Low Income Investment Fund. They're based in San Francisco, and they work with communities across the country, as well as in California, to look for ways to build capacity around childcare. And so there's a three-person team that built that first report. We sent a copy to all of you, and it focused on three component areas around public sector, public sector's role in working on childcare problem solving. The first was, how does a public agency walk the talk? How do we take care of our own? And if you look at all four of those agencies and you add up the workforce in those four agencies alone, that's more than 10% of the workforce in San Luis Obispo County. So y'all can already solve some of the problems around childcare capacity by taking care of your own employees. So that was the first component of this initial study. The second focused on the levers that especially city and county governments can play around policy change, land use, zoning, permitting, general plan language updates. And the good news is San Luis Obispo County is out front in a number of areas already. There were some things already in motion when the study began, and I believe there are more, there's more that could be done, both in San Luis Obispo as well as the county and other cities in this county. And then the third component area, which if you ask anyone in the field itself, they would say you actually have to start with the third component area, is the childcare workforce itself. They are the, I mean, I'm biased, but they are among the hardest-working, lowest-paid, most-important, least-valued workers in our country and in our county. So we asked this Low Income Investment Fund team to focus some of their attention on what are the roles of these four partners and other public sector agencies to really value and lift up that particular workforce, look for career pathways, invest in the future of the childcare workforce in our county. So that 58-page report, there was a lot in there, a lot, almost too much to know what to do with. So then our study team came back together. And by the way, each of these four agencies had a staff person designated to work with First Five and the Planning Council and Capsulo's Childcare Resource Connection. For the city, it was Megan Berger. It's Megan Berger, she's here tonight. Special shout out to Megan. The team, with help from the staff leads in each of the four agencies, decided to go deeper on a human resources, look at our own workforce. And so we hired another really fantastic consultant woman named Fran McIntyre, who works with Pendulum Dependent Care Solutions. She also is very connected with Cal Poly's Child Development Department, and she designed and administered a survey which asked working parents in all four agencies, what are your needs? How much does childcare connect to your ability to stay on the job or not stay on the job? And so we, there's a compendium of information that is already starting to help inform the HR departments, and at least I know of two of the four agencies who are really digging deep, County San Luis Obispo being the one I'm most aware of, some of the changes that they've made based on that study. So those are the two big pieces of work that we use, some of those funds that were amassed. And then in addition to that, as Chris will tell you, we really have been looking at what are the big findings out of these two studies? And what do we as your experts on this issue feel really are your best opportunities, whether it's the City of San Luis Obispo, or the county, or any others of the cities? We feel that this is a great opportunity to encourage other cities to be thinking of their opportunities. So Chris is going to walk you through what we came up with in the way of lanes, we call them. What are the lanes that city government operates in that you have an opportunity to build on?
Hello, good evening. So we, oh yeah, there it is. Wonderful. So, so there was that beautiful 54-page compendium of opportunities that were presented to the four partners. And what we did in-house was we distilled that down. And we distilled it down in a way to consider the rules, the unique roles that local government has. Because again, it is not the role of local government to fix these issues. However, they are uniquely positioned in order to pull certain levers. And so that's where I want to briefly walk you through this diagram. So it's a little hard to see on the screen up there, but I know that you all have your own copies in front of you. The different roles are local government as a school-age childcare provider. As you know, the City of Slow provides some after-school and before-school care. The question that we might pose, again, these are offerings, are like, what would it look like if that was entirely covered for anybody wanting it? So again, these are a compendium of offerings, some with very little to no cost, and some with some cost but not built in. I don't believe any of these have requirements of building or bringing on new staff. So the next one is local government as an employer. Like Wendy mentioned, the second study really looked at in-house, right? So could you expand the suite of employee benefits relating to childcare? Can you work with our local Slow Chamber Family Workplace Accelerator to really push the limits of what programs you could provide as far as family friendliness to staff already here at the city? Local government is also a property owner. Can you assign local government-owned property for use by childcare programs or operated therein? Local government also looks at economic stimulus. They're an economic stimulator. And just recently, I want to give kudos to the city, they had some new innovation within the last few years in which we've been incentivizing the start of new childcare businesses. And since the beginning of that program, we've had seven new businesses opened with a total of 56 new childcare slots. And that's some innovation that came directly from the city. So congratulations for already doing that one, and we hope that that continues. Prioritizing childcare as a core economic and economic development strategy. Again, local government as a planner, because developments happen here, how can we do so wisely and with childcare in mind? And then local government as a partner in regional investment. I know that the city values not doing everything but working regionally. And so how can you contribute to the planning infrastructure within the county? Because we know that not all of the children that come to City of Slow live in City of Slow, because a lot of people come to the City of Slow. And childcare is not just where you live, it's often where you work as well. And sometimes it's just wherever you can find it. And so, so I wanted to present these offerings for you. Again, this is something that we wanted to hope, we hope that was a little bit more able to be, it was a little more palpable than a giant document. And so we hope that you find that helpful and that we're happy to support you if you want to pursue any of these things. So Wendy's going to wrap this up for this evening, and then we're going to entertain some questions.
Just a reminder, lest you didn't know this, this is a major work in progress. Some people have asked us, okay, so you met in 2019, you had an MOU in 2019, now it's 2023. Did you solve it yet? Obviously, this is an ongoing effort. The team that I described that represents the four agencies, we stand ready to carry this the next stage forward. There is still $30,000 left in that shared pot of money to take on another piece of the work. And we look for direction, both in the city council and our partners in the other three agencies, to help us best navigate forward and provide you the support that you need to make some, hopefully some good decisions and bold ones to carry us forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I believe we have public comment on this. If you have, if you would like to provide public comment and you have not provided a yellow slip to our city clerk, please let her know. Tysefrenno?
Surgeon for it. All right, I'm going to set a timer. Oh, you have a timer. It's much better. I guess start, start, you have to wait for the presentation, yeah. It's going to be, I don't expect to hit all of it, I'm just going to point out things that you should look at. No worries. More than three minutes, but I was unusually quiet. I could also just talk through it. I think you have it. Okay. I'm just going to, at some point you're going to see it. So I'm just going to give you kind of the highlights. So real quick, Tysefrenno Trust Automation, we have Trust Children's Center, which is an onsite childcare for our employees. I also have Sarah Davis, who's our TCC director, is here. And most of you already know that Trudy and I are a bit insane, so we're going to, you know, what you would have seen. But what you can look at is actually our real operating budgets and things that are occurring. So on the highlights, 48% of our employees are in our childcare, the rest of it's community kids. It turned out it was easier just to, it's, it costs about the same, so it made sense to go the full volume we're allowed. Ah, good. Okay. And I will, oops, how do I click forward? Okay, go next one. Yep. Next one. So 49% of the tuition that's brought in covers, so the parents' tuition includes trust employees and community, only covers about 45% of our costs. And want to point out that we have 35 spots, but we have 100-plus people sitting on a waiting list that goes out three years. We decided to stop at the three-year part. So well before needing to have kids, people are having to sign up. Next slide. Just a real quick breakdown on wages, our biggest cost by means are wages. So for us, that's a thing that is key to be solved. Next slide. So this is our budget, our P and L estimates for 2023. If you look at the top button is the tuition paid by parents. The red is the delta, so it's about 400 and something thousand, I should have wore my glasses, that we actually scholarship to pay for the center. So again, it goes to, wages are the big thing from our view, how you do childcare, it costs more than you can charge parents, so you've got to have that aspect. The other piece to look at is our, our current center was about $850,000 to set up. Our new center is going to be about 3.5 million is what we estimate. Next slide. This is just a concept of our new center. We're building another 45 spots. Again, we're insane. Next slide. More of it. Next slide. And then on, one of the things that we are struggling with, and Derek has gotten a full head load from us, is the fees. So we're trying to build a center, we have $118,000 in fees. These are the top four items, which I go, why am I paying for a school fee when I'm building a school? The public art fee, I don't know, why am I doing that? Affordable housing fee, I'm kind of helping with the whole problem, and that's $40,000 I'm putting in. And then the Los Osos Valley service fee is another $45,000. So the bulk of it, I look at like as a childcare center trying to solve the problem. It's really hard to add another $118,000 on top of this. Next slide. The GLEDA model, you've seen in the report from First Five, it has a very interesting way of making this very simple for people. And that's my, when I was talking to Wendy, the takeaway for me is, is people who do childcare do it because they love it. And they're not developers, they're not business people, they tend to love it. So if you could streamline, if you could make it easier, if you can provide that guidance, I think you will have a bunch of success from that. Otherwise, you can ask Sarah. It is craziness that someone like me is used to, but not what, it's not a lot of energy should be spent there. Next slide. And then this is just kind of a breakdown of what I review to as the harsh reality, and you can read through that from our perspective. Thank you very much. This is just a concept of our new center, we're building another 45 spots. Again, we're insane. Next slide. More of it, next slide. And then on, one of the things that we are struggling with, and Derek has gotten a full head load from us, is the fees. So we're trying to build a center, we have $118,000 in fees. These are the top four items, which I go, why am I paying for a school fee when I'm building a school? The public art fee, I don't know, why am I doing that? Affordable housing fee, I'm kind of helping with the whole problem, that's $40,000 I'm putting in. And then the Los Osos Valley service fee is another $45,000. So the bulk of it, I look at like, as a childcare center trying to solve the problem. It's really hard to add another 118,000 on top of this. Next slide. The Galita model, you've seen in the report from first five, it has a very interesting way of making this very simple for people. And that's my, when I was talking to Wendy, takeaway for me is, is people who do childcare do it because they love it. And they're not developers, they're not business people, they tend to love it. So if you could streamline, if you could make it easier, if you can provide that guidance, I think you will have a bunch of success from that. Otherwise, you can ask Sarah, it is craziness that someone like me is used to, but not what, it's not a lot of energy should be spent there. Next slide. And then this is just kind of a breakdown of what I review to as the harsh reality, and you can read through that from our perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I hope we get to look at those slides in more depth later. Thank you very much for the presentation, and I want to just check and see if my councilmembers have any questions or comments. Okay, well, council member Francis.
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, thank everybody who came here tonight and shared the findings of the study and then also personal experience. I've spoken a lot about how childcare was a huge barrier for me when I first moved to Slow about a decade ago, kept me out of the workforce for more than a year. And I was a teacher, so it was also kind of that piece of keeping me out of the classroom. And so I know that this is a major issue. And I know that we also talked about this at our goal setting. So we're really putting this front and center as a council that we really want to see significant change here. And maybe the question tonight is around kind of where we focus our energy first? Because obviously, part of our goal setting was looking at the limited resources and trade offs that need to be made. And what I'm really hearing is, other than the limitation of the workforce, which seems like it is the most significant piece, but also maybe one that the city doesn't have a lot of control over, is looking at the development and streamlining that process. And so I would just ask you all if you could maybe, and Wendy, I don't know if you want to hop back up and talk a little bit about what you see as kind of the main priorities in that streamlining, how we as a city can help facilitate the opening of more childcare facilities.
We're in brief, I feel like we've got some great examples already in play in other communities. And most recently, I've heard from my colleague down in Santa Barbara County, who's done some really seminal work with county planning, community development in both the city of Galita as well as the county of Santa Barbara. She's made, they've worked together to make some incremental changes around some ordinances and policies. I'm not smart enough to know the details of what they worked on, but I know between the two of them, with her expertise in childcare facilities development and working with her colleagues in planning and community development, they were able to find some incremental changes that they made. And in a very short period of time, she can point to a number of different examples of players who wouldn't have come to the table without those changes. Couple of housing developers, a couple of employers who are now starting to do things kind of like trust automation because these ordinances have changed. So I would say a next step would be to go deeper into those possibilities and use some expertise and examples in best practice from the field.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I remember, excuse me, going to the Temple Beth David and having, you know, just hundreds of people there, it was just amazing to see that from, you know, from that day to here, where we've come. And I really, I thank you for bringing it up, Chris, around the grants that the city has done to help community members open up businesses. I remember quite a while back, trying to help another organization open up a childcare, and the process around the licensing is so difficult and the business and the city and all of the parts together is so complicated when someone's like, I just want to take care of the kids. So they aren't necessarily the person who has all the rest of that knowledge. So I appreciate you all helping make it go a little bit smoother. Count Vice Mayor Marks.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say that you're talking to a city council of five mothers, we've all had kids. And so this is a subject near and dear to our heart. I'm just curious about the demand in terms of the age of the children. I'm, I'm not really sure where the greatest need would be at this point.
I think Shayna might be coming up.
Okay. This is Shayna Paulson from the Childcare Resource.
Hi, the demand for childcare continues to be high. And it's not just, I think even if we were to have all the slots for exactly the number of children, parent choice continues to be something we can't offer in our community or communities across the nation. We still see a high need for care, for the care of children under the age of two. Those require many more caregivers and I know Ty and Sarah could speak to the cost appropriately, responsively, not being a responsive caregiver to children who are under the age of two. We still see a lot of need in the population of children over two, between two and five. And then our school age populations are all shifting right now. So there's so much going on with universal preschool and transitional kindergarten, all these things are happening, but there are factors related to transportation and after school care and co-mingling of these really young children, those transitional kindergartners with older children that are on those school campuses. And so our whole community is needing to come together and find strategies for families. But remember, we have families in our community that work unusual hours. And so sometimes we need to spend some time working with our not licensed providers, those caregivers who are able to provide those evening, weekend and after school care. And so we do have programs in our county also serving the city that are working with family, friends and neighbors, with grandparents who are really trying to build their skills so that they can be the kind of caregivers that help us grow and educate our community's children.
Thank you.
I could give you numbers, but more importantly, I think you've heard the stories from people who are not able to find what they need in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we're really talking about well care at this point, not even sick childcare. Councilmember Shorsen.
I think Vice Mayor Marks hit the nail on the head when she said, we've all been moms, we've all struggled with this issue. I remember a sort of half joke about when my child was old enough to go to school and it felt like I got a raise because I no longer had that really high childcare bill to contend with. But I see Ty's hand up in the air, so I'll maybe end with him. But I just wanted to ask a question too. You know, you mentioned, I appreciate that, that we've done some great things within the city to increase slots in childcare with the scholarship program. We've tweaked zoning requirements, we've done quite a few things that were on your sort of best practices. I'm wondering if there are any other, I appreciate the model from Galita that Ty gave the example of, are there any other things that, that our neighboring cities could do? And maybe you could also describe a little bit in a nutshell of what the county, you hinted at the county doing something. So just wondering if you could talk about that a little bit and what other cities are doing.
Right, so I'll start with the county. So the county actually dedicated $3 million out of the ARPA grant, which is unprecedented, and specifically for childcare, which has been huge. So we're able to do our first, we broke it up into three buckets. First one being more of a base economic stabilizer, business stabilizing grant. And so for anyone that was a licensed program, they were able to get anywhere between $3,000 and $6,000, depending on how many children they actually served. And so that was just addressing that, the fact that there has been such turmoil within the childcare sector, especially, I'm sure you all know, the amount of regulations that already happens with childcare through COVID was astronomical in terms of how to actually still provide care. And so the second piece of that, that we're looking at and embarking on is how we are going to give expansion grants. And so expansion doesn't necessarily mean more slots, another building, whatever it might look like. It could be shifting from having four year olds in your program to serving more two year olds. And what does that look like? Because that opens an entire different can of worms in terms of all of your licensing requirements, where things need to be spaced, how many toilets you have, where they're all at. That is a huge piece. So we're looking at how do we shift that model? As Wendy and both Shayna talked about in terms of how the state is looking at different pieces. So there's a whole universal transitional kindergarten or universal, universal pre-K that is being implemented across the board and across our state. And so what does that do to the rest of this early care and education and childcare sector? So figuring out what that piece looks like. So that's the next piece of that countywide ARPA grant. We're also looking at how we can support workforce development. And so through that, and in partnership with some of the other programs that we have that are already in existence, leveraging how we can bring new people into the field. Because as Ty said it, as you all know, it is a very low paying, low regarded field. And so that's hard to attract people when you honestly could go to Starbucks or anywhere else and make more without having to give your all. I mean, I know you in the classroom, you don't just walk away at the end of the day, you'd bring that with you everywhere you go. And you really, it's a labor of love. And so when we're looking at that, how do we attract more? So we are working more on the workforce side of things. We also have a couple other cities that have partnered in terms of being able to offer some ARPA grants as well. And so some business development grants, either through an improvement within their program or again, an expansion of services. And expansion again, doesn't necessarily mean a whole new building. It's how else can we use our outdoor space and utilize that more so that we can really extend the quality of care? Because that also extends how long you can have children in your program, if they can do more things, as well as the safety of, you know, having additional space. Safety, I say, in the pandemic, we need more space, physically more space to be around. And then we're looking at really embarking on how do we make and leverage other additional resources within other cities? So that was a Royal Grande and Grover and Pismo Beach, who also dedicated some expansion funds as well as business stabilization grants. And then looking into our North County, within Atascadero, we're having conversations around how we can look at city goals again and really see if there's a public policy side of this. We're also branching off with their chamber and really extending that family friendly workplace accelerator program into how can we extend business practices and business supports for childcare? So it's kind of the gamut. I wish I could say one thing, lots of different things.
Thank you. And then I just, if Ty had something he wanted to add, I wanted to give him that opportunity.
So when you, so when you asked where the need is, I poked Sarah. And we see significant demand in Sub Two. So that's where we're seeing the majority of our stuff. For our current center, we have a six weeks to two year old, two year old to start a kindergarten. The new center has three, because the six weeks to two year old is too big of a gap, you need to have the three classrooms.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. What a great presentation, and we really appreciate you spending the time. So much information for the community, and I know there's a lot more to go. And I also really appreciate the collaborations I know we'll continue to have with Cuesta, Cal Poly and the different chambers in the community, the different businesses. And City Manager Johnson, did you have a comment?
Just going to hop in, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we've been working closely with Wendy and her team, and certainly we'll be bringing forward some items as part of your work program. There is just a couple strategic conversations we've been having. One is with Cal Poly potentially, and looking at the possibility of some future partnerships with Cal Poly and the school district. One of the big limiting factors, you know, the city being the largest childcare provider in the county, we provide care to over 1,000 children a day, is really facilities. You know, we would love to be able to expand at many of our school sites, but facilities are one of the big constraints. So we plan on reaching out to Dr. Prater and his team to talk about as they just received voter approval for some work at some of their elementary schools, is there opportunities for conjunctive use of some of those classroom spaces so that they can provide the flex space that we need? They have space constraints and their space constraints are our constraints. We have had some conversations initially with the Boys and Girls Club about some of the outdoor spaces. They approached us, and so they're entertaining a couple options right now. Whether or not they work out, I think is a question for us into the future. As you may recall, I think the mayor mentioned this, we did provide a comprehensive update of our zoning code. And we were specifically asked by the council to implement best practices around streamlining our permitting. And we've seen that effect, we've seen that projects have gone through more smoothly. The issue that Mr. Sevino brings up is one of, I think, a question about impact fees and then equity, because we have a rubric we have to adhere to, which is under maybe 1,600. So we need to look at those fees and ultimately, the council could decide to use general fund backfill to pay those or provide other mechanism. But as we currently today, we've worked hard to try to work with Ty and his team. We haven't been able to find any way, just given, you know, how we, each project needs to pay its fair share. I think that covers the bulk of it. I think, you know, we'll certainly be talking to Wendy as we put together our work program, which just for everyone in the room will be considered by the council on April 18th. And so there'll be an item in there specifically on what we plan to do moving forward based upon this report and the feedback that we got tonight.
Thank you so much. And I know that the Cal Poly has mentioned at some point in time that there's another building they'll be building over, and hopefully they'll be including childcare in there as well for their workforce as well, or maybe for their students also. Well, thank you very much, appreciate all of your time. And we're going to go ahead and move forward to the city manager report. City manager.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've got a brief report tonight. I just want to just share a couple items as we go ahead and move to the next slide. One, just want to remind the community that we have a project moving forward. It's our neighborhood park, which was originally, I think, put in the, in the budget back in about 2015 timeframe. So it's, it is originally a community garden park. We've done some onsite outreach in the neighborhood beginning in 2017 with conceptual designs in 2019. And we'll be moving forward this summer with the construction of that park. So this is part of our continued investments in Slow in Motion. You'll actually be having another project that will be coming to you at your next meeting on consent calendar, which is the North Choro Greenway Project. That'll be coming to the city council on consent to award that contract. Next, I want to just provide an update to the city council on the Prado Road Interchange Project. It's currently in the planning stages and community members have been asked and invited to provide feedback on the environmental document through March 2nd, 2023. The city, along with our partner Caltrans, are working closely together to plan and design this interchange. The community also is welcome to provide feedback on the bridge and interchange design through Caltrans, who will ultimately determine and approve the final design. To community members can learn more at upcoming meetings. The environmental document is open to the public from February 2nd through March 6th. And you can submit comments via email to diana.bek@dot.ca.gov. We'll make sure we have that information in the minutes for tonight. And then for more information, you can follow and learn more about the project at slowcity.org/prodo. Want to also just, moving to the next slide, just, we're now pleased to announce the ribbon cutting for the recently completed downtown street improvements. So this event will take place on Tuesday, February 28th at 2:00 at the Downtown Center Plaza at 890 Marsh Street. The project was among many others in Slow in Motion this last year. It's a multimillion dollar investment that aims to improve mobility, accessibility and safety for all modes of transportation. Improvements completed included new bike lanes, wider sidewalks, upgraded pedestrian crossings and much more. So this is part of our continued effort to make investments in the city of San Luis Obispo. Next, on a somewhat in a somber tone, I just want to invite the community to mourn the loss of our dedicated and civic minded friend and colleague, Mr. Keith Dunlop. He recently served on two city of San Luis Obispo advisory bodies. He was a member of the Personnel Board from March of 2019 and served as the vice chair of the Revenue Enhancement Oversight Committee since May of 2022. For all those who want to come and honor and celebrate the memory, and the community is invited to the Keith Dunlop Memorial Bike Ride and Run this Saturday, the 25th. And there's the, you can see on the screen the schedule of events, people arriving at 8:00 AM, 8:30 welcome, remembrance, and then there'll be opportunities for a bike start, run, walk. Just want to just let everyone know that we, there is forecasted some rainy and windy weather, so this will proceed regardless of the weather. And so the host, Boris Garitano, who Mr. Dunlop worked for, has, will move the events and schedule inside if we have rain that morning. Speaking of rain, just wanted to give the council an update on our recovery efforts that has been recurring for several weeks. The formal beginning of FEMA's Public Assistance Pro- Program recently began with the city's submission of the request for public assistance form to FEMA. The recovery work is a multi-departmental effort to ensure the team can address both critical storm-related projects and maximize financial recovery through federal and state programs. So just to highlight some recent accomplishments, we developed our Recovery Action Plan. You can see on the right side of the screen, a copy of that plan, and that plan outlines roles and responsibilities and our objectives during the planning period. We submitted that request for public assistance. We released a request for qualifications from Recovery Consultant Services. And this is important to note, we're seeking support for making sure we're maximizing our recovery of any costs and then our eligibility for any grant programs. We've also been attending Cal OES applicant briefings and meeting with our federal and state departments to navigate through the recovery process. In terms of our focus and our priority items is bolstering our documentation on prior and current work on storm-related projects, refining our cost tracking, and then we're wrapping up the majority of debris removal activity by February 24, which marks the 60-day from the commencement of the disaster. We've also got some work to do to coordinate with our JPA, CAL, Joint Powers Insurance Agency, to recover any costs that are eligible. So quite an effort underway. It's taken a lot of our team. And we're also thinking this in light of the planned inclement weather that'll be happening over the rest of this week. We've already seen that happening. I'm sure many of you went through the winds tonight. We've already gotten some reports of a few trees that have already fallen down because of the saturated soils. And so we are anticipating just elevated storm response team over the next few days. I wanted to share some of our other emergency preparedness. We've, the city used grant funding from the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the Ready, Set, Go Program to remove hazardous fire fuels from the East Fork of San Luis Creek. The project was a multi-department effort from fire, administration, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. The contract crew has removed about 130 cubic yards of dead and down vegetation, covering 3.5 acres. And the Parks Recreation Open Space technicians chipped the vegetation. So it's a multi-beneficial project. It's the fuel removal likely assisted in reducing flood potential caused by debris buildup at the confluence of the main San Luis Obispo Creek. And we are looking to secure some more grant funding in the future and coordinating with CAL FIRE's California Climate Investment Fund. So more on that in here in the future. Last, Madam Mayor, I'll just announce that Battalion Chief Sammy Fox was officially appointed to the rank of Deputy Chief as of February 16. And he'll be introduced formally at the next city council meeting. Chief Fox had been serving in interim roles as Deputy Chief since October of 2022. He's been with the department for over 20 years since 2001. I also want to share with the council some other highlights that's happening in the department. The Mobile Crisis Unit is continuing to make some big impacts locally and recently assisted community members through the process of getting admitted to a sober living facility for an individual that needed to go through detox. Once admitted, the Mobile Crisis Unit provided transportation to the facility down in Southern California. Last week, SLO Fire Department hosted a regional urban search and rescue team drill downtown to train on shoring operations to assist with rescuing the victims and damaged structures after an earthquake. And so the city fire department has six members on the regional team, which is managed by CAL FIRE, includes members from other fire departments throughout the county as well. I'll just end with, I had a chance to go to the city managers' conference last week, received some interesting presentation by other cities and COGS that are providing mobile crisis units. And you can really see that San Luis Obispo is really leading the way of looking at pairing up social services and EMTs or first responders and providing different types of services for those individuals that are experiencing stress in our community. And with that, Madam Mayor, happy to conclude the report. You can answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I have to say, watching the Instagram presentation, Assistant Chief Sammy Fox was quite interesting. Thank you very much for that fun from the fire department. And really excited also to see the creek cleanup, the presentation. I know many people have commented to me around the debris and getting to see that in person is a really great visual. So thank you for that. City Manager?
Yeah, I should have mentioned, I've been, is Director Avakin still here? We're having some initial conversations with our volunteer coordinators, who's getting up to speed about those, when is the right time to coordinate some creek cleanup? I know the council has received a lot of feedback about the condition of our creeks relative to trash. And so we're trying to figure out the right timing and making sure we have the permissions. Many of the areas that you see where there is trash in the creeks, we may not have a legal right to access because it's private property. And so some of those areas, we're trying to make contact with those property owners, get access, and see if they'll be willing to let some volunteers go down there and do some of the cleanup work.
Thank you so much. Would you like to add anything? Okay, great. Anything from my colleagues? Vice Mayor Marks?
I just want to commend the city again on the response to the floods. And I had the opportunity to talk to Gus, one of the long-term employees. And he, he was one of the people who was staying up all night with his, his colleagues. And, and he said it was really hard, but it was a wonderful experience. And he was so happy. There were no injuries. All the city employees doing this terribly dangerous work in the middle of the night under these incredible conditions, not one employee got injured. So I just want to thank everybody for the safe practices.
Wonderful. It is amazing, truly. Okay, so now we'll move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. If you have not turned in your yellow slip to the city clerk, this is that time. And city clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have five. I'll call three at a time. And if you'll just be ready to speak when your time's up. So Carolyn Smith, I'm sorry, yeah, Karen Adler and Kathy Walker are our first.
Madam Mayor and council members, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of residents for quality neighborhoods. As you may know, RQN's mission for 32 years has been to assist city residents in their quest to preserve, protect, and improve the quality of life in their residential neighborhoods. Residents come to us for help when they have problems in their neighborhood that the city hasn't resolved. I trust you all viewed the video that RQN's chair emailed you over the weekend. St. Frat's Day Annual Block Party and the conduct you saw in that video are what brought RQN members asking for help for themselves and their neighbors. This event is purposely held outside the St. Patrick's Day Safety Enhancement Zone period to avoid double fines for noise and alcohol citations. Since 2009, residents have been forced to suffer the consequences from this event each year. And unfortunately, residents in the area feel it's not gotten any better. As the video shows, it all begins at 4:00 AM abruptly waking up residents in a broad area with fireworks. It just gets worse from there with hours of music blasting, loud yelling, large crowds blocking streets, and risky behavior from too much alcohol consumption by climbing utility poles and dancing on rooftops. By sheer luck, no one has gotten fatally injured yet. Over the years, residents have appealed to councils and the PD to enforce city ordinances with zero tolerance in the hope of deterring this conduct. But pre-planning citations and arrests have had minimal effect on the out-of-control behavior that is extremely disruptive to area residents. Partiers brag on social media that the police can't do anything because they're outnumbered. I think you'll agree, this is not a good message to send. Residents feel helpless while partiers are basically in control of their neighborhood for hours on end. Please don't minimize this as young people just having fun. This certainly doesn't feel like fun or harmless to many residents in the area. So perhaps it's time for the city and Cal Poly to discuss putting an end to the event, or at least move it on to campus away from neighborhoods where there's ample room. In the meantime, please consider the following. First, expand the Safety Enhancement Zone to include the weekend before St. Patrick's Day through the weekend after. A previous chief asked for this but was denied. Second, require the hosts to apply for a special events permit. It's a 10-page application with strict requirements, which includes events being subject to closure if permit rules aren't followed. It's inexplicable why everyone else has to have a large event permit in the city to have an event. But the hosts of this event don't need to have one. Why not? Third, an hour before start time, have as large a presence of law enforcement personnel as possible in the areas where this event is usually held. And I don't mean just personnel just on call, but actually present. And Cal Poly should share in the cost for what's needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Would you mind giving me time at the beginning? Thank you. It's been a long time since I've been in person in council, and it's nice to see you. My husband and I live on Frederick Street. We've lived there since 2009, expecting our sons, and have experienced St. Frat's Day each year. I'm worried because of that year, except for 2015. Last year was the worst year we've seen. And this year is the perfect storm with St. Patrick's Day back-to-back on Saturday and Sunday. Last year, in 2015, Poly and San Luis Obispo worked together beforehand. And according to the flyer that they came up with, quote, "Developed a comprehensive collaboration to develop a variety of tactics to inform students of expectations and encourage safety and responsibility," unquote. And there are a litany of things listed on their plan to promote that. I don't think things went according to that plan because our neighborhood was completely taken over by intoxicated young students, and it was mayhem. By 5:00 AM, college students were flooding into our neighborhood from every direction. Parades of students converging into our Alta Vista, San Luis Obispo neighborhood where we live. I don't think things were according to plan because police officers I spoke with were overwhelmed. They'd parked their units at the intersection at the end of our block and said there was nothing they could do. They'd called their supervisor to the scene. One young officer kept saying, "I'm sorry." And he, he didn't need to apologize to me, but I think he was sorry because he felt helpless. And that must have felt terrible. Law enforcement was not in control of the situation, and that is scary. You could see from the video. And yet, according to the joint plan between Cal Poly and San Luis Obispo, the college students had been forewarned. The fraternities and sororities were sent a letter emphasizing safety and potential repercussions for violations. Nearly every one of the citations issued on Hathaway and Bond at Fredericks was to a house whose tenants are fraternity members, though not necessarily registered as a satellite house. According to the plan, there's a long list to prepare the college students ahead of time. But the plan failed. It did. This year, I feel the plan should be prevention. Send the message that St. Frat's Day is canceled. The idea around the event, getting together, getting drunk, overtaking the neighborhood, should not be tolerated. Prevent students from converging into our neighborhood and overtaking public roadways and partying on rooftops. A large concentration of law enforcement should preempt these events by being present early, on their bikes, on foot, early, before it's allowed to get out of hand. Issue citations. That usually shuts down a party. And if you look at the video, last year, the most egregious violator was 348 Hathaway, and it wasn't even cited. Please don't allow St. Frat's Day or the block party to happen again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen Adler, Jeff Idelman, and then Ethan Shapen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Karen Adler. I was born and raised in San Luis, so I've experienced a lot of change. And I like to flow with it, but this isn't working. I live in the Alta Vista neighborhood, which is a neighborhood that borders Cal Poly's campus. The penalty we pay is that we are thought of as a college neighborhood. We are not. We're a residential neighborhood that has Cal Poly students that live in our neighborhood. I am here this evening to ask for your help. St. Patrick's Day, we are inundated with college-age revelers that seem to think setting off fireworks at 4:30 or 5:00 AM is really cool. This is nerve-wracking to be jolted out of bed at that hour of the morning, only to face a day of inebriated students wandering the streets, searching for the closest house that is serving green beer. All four of my now adult children graduated from Cal Poly, and 18 Cal Poly students live next door to me. They seem to have a mutual respect for the neighborhood they have chosen to live in. But the throng of students that embrace St. Frat's Day with irreverence and drunken mayhem are a disruption to every permanent resident that lives in that neighborhood. We suggest that you enable the San Luis Obispo Police Department to tackle this problem head-on with enhanced fines for the week before St. Patrick's Day and the week of St. Patrick's Day for a total of two weeks. Fines are the only deterrent that gets their attention. As a permanent resident, we dread St. Frat's Day, as they call it. And to quote Matt Lazzier, one of Cal Poly's spokespeople, as stated in the Tribune in regard to another unrelated incident, and I'm quoting, "Cal Poly takes very seriously any conduct or behavior that could negatively impact our university community," finish the quote. "St. Frat's Day is a prime example of bad behavior of Cal Poly students. Mardi Gras became out of control, as did Cal Poly's Royals' neighborhood celebrations. Now St. Frat's Day is out of control. It is a nightmare for permanent residents. The roof collapse on Hathaway in 2015 should have been a warning. Each year has, has become worse. Please grant us an extension to the enhanced fine as a hopeful deterrent. And thank you for listening to us."
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Jeff Idelman. I've been a resident here for 43 years. I live at Ground Zero, Hell's Kitchen. I've been in front of this city council many times and coined the phrase, "Don't turn Alta Vista, excuse me, Alta Vista into Isla Vista." Unfortunately, we failed at that. I do feel that my neighborhood is Isla Vista now. I just want to mention Ken Schwartz's 98th birthday is this Thursday. He and Lou Tadon are smiling down at me tonight. Glad that I'm talking to you. Tonight, I'd like to speak from my heart about what it's like to be in my house on St. Frat's Day. I am in the eye of the hurricane. If there is such a saint, he surely must be dead now and turning in his grave about this folly day named after him. Some Cal Poly students make a mockery of St. Patrick and our neighborhood by yearly debauchery of our streets with drunkenness, profanity, rude, and uncivilized behavior. We wake up to loud voices before 5:00 AM. Students begin drinking before 6:00, yelling and screaming. There are hundreds of students. Students climb up on rooftops. We've had other large student events here in our institutional memory, too. Don't forget, as was mentioned, Poliroyal or the Mardi Gras. Great traditions canceled after many years of rowdy behavior. No one sponsors St. Frat's Day, so it can't be canceled, but the city must find better ways to mitigate this non-event. There needs to be a more coordinated effort by police to be ready for this and possibly ask other departments in nearby cities for preemptive help. Cal Poly should help too with ideas, leadership, and financial support to our police department for the costs incurred. Many years ago, I wrote the city council about the rooftop problem, and a council member wrote back to me, and the response was, quote, "My family and I go up on our roofs from time to time and really enjoy it." Mind you, I am a doctor, not a lawyer or an architect. I know rooftops can take some human weight. But encouraging or not discouraging this when it becomes 5, 10, or 50 people is a mistake. Besides the safety factor, it is unnerving and intimidating to have our students on the next-door roof peer in at us at our kitchen while we're eating. Staunching. I urge city residents and the city council I urge city residents and the city council to reconsider banning rooftop excursions except for cleaning and maintenance. There is still a danger, and was recently watching the video that was sent to you, and I am amazed that with the crashing of that roof, it still gives me the chills. It's amazing that people didn't die or that there weren't more serious injuries. So I encourage you, anyone within the sound of my voice, to re-watch the video. It made national headlines. Watch it tonight when you go home. I urge you, no pun intended, walk the walk, not talk the talk. Come to Kentucky and Hathaway at 6:00.
Thank you so much.
Our final speaker on this item is Ethan Shankman.
I just wanted to read something in regards to the Social Security Act that is relevant to everybody here in this room. And what it says is, "The right to any person, to any future payment under this title shall not be transferable or assignable at law or in equity, and none of the monies paid or payable or rights existing under this title shall be subject to execution, levy, attachment, garnishment, or other legal process, or to the operation of any bankruptcy or insolvency law. No other provision of law enacted before, on, or after the date of the enactment of this section may be construed to limit, supersede, or otherwise modify the provisions of this section except to the consent that it does so by express reference to this section. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prohibit withholding taxes from any benefit under this title if such withholding is done pursuant to a request made in accordance with Section 3402P, one of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, by the person entitled to such benefit or such person's representative payee." This is the Social Security Act, Section 207, 42 U.S.C. 407. And loosely interpreted, just understand that basically currently waivers, exclusions, and exemptions apply to the handicap of the disabled, the convalescent, and the infirm, those who are otherwise solely dependent on this particular pension program that would otherwise be waived from DMV fees, municipal taxes, these kind of utilities that have actually been forwarded in other cities, I couldn't say you speak for this one, I wouldn't now, to somehow collect for the differences over disaster like the utility companies. Basically, we had a pre-existing environmental impact report in Santa Barbara citing mudslides, and what basically returned out of that was a lawsuit against a utility company for which now the housing programs are enforcing against the handicap to basically pay those utility bills. This is for real. Just wanted to basically update what is going on. It's very windy outside, and thank you for this time for attention. I hope all of it is coherent. You're welcome to also look me up online at what is currently found at world wide web powerhousemedia.net.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I mean, thank you.
Any other public commenters?
No, there are none.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and then we'll move on into... Oh, sorry, no, I apologize. We're going to go ahead and do Consent Agenda, and then we'll do our break. And I believe Vice Mayor, you'd like to share about Consent Agenda?
I would just say that I'm going to recuse myself from Item 5C on the Consent Agenda, which is the partial completion of subdivision improvements for Track 3150, multifamily condominium re-subdivision of lots 1 and 2 of Track 3096, San Luis Ranch. I'm not going to vote on that item since I live in San Luis Ranch. Still there for us to conflict. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Pease?
Yes, I do want to pull an item, but before that, I couldn't... I don't have a visual to know if the city manager or police chief, if they had wanted to comment on the St. Frat's Day concerns, because I know a lot of work is being done in that area.
We could have Police Chief Scott come up and share what he shared at the Student Community Liaison Committee and more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. Appreciate this opportunity just to respond to some of the community comments here tonight. And first, just would like to applaud our community members for coming out and surfacing this important issue. We've wrestled with this problem for many, many years here in our community. We continue to look for safe and peaceful ways to resolve what we know is probably inevitable. I would like to say that we do have a plan in place. Contrary to some of the comments, our plan does work. We do have some tweaks that we're going to do to it just to make sure that it is effective and that we're communicating that across our community. Lastly, just very proud that we do have our partnership with our community, not only through St. Frat's Day and St. Patrick's Day, but all year round, we work very closely with RQN, as well as some of the neighbors over in that particular neighborhood, and I'm proud of the progress that we're making on that front. So with that, I'll be back to you March 7th to provide the details surrounding St. Patrick's Day and also with the events that we anticipate with St. Frat's Day. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Marks.
Yeah, I had a question.
Sorry, can I?
That's okay. Sorry. No, I had a question for Chief Scott. Would it be possible to... I mean, a lot of these students are coming out of the dorms. So, I mean, having lived in that neighborhood for over 30 years, I'm very aware of St. Frat's Day. The traffic, the foot traffic, is pretty predictable. You know where maybe even a third of them are coming from. Is it possible to have some kind of a check, like you do for DUI checks, like drunken public checks, in some way to screen them? Perhaps have a barrier at a street that they'd have to walk through? I don't know, I'm not a police officer, but I'm just hoping that it's a very well-organized event. They all have costumes that match. I'm sure it's already... The costumes have already been ordered. I just feel that there needs to be a more strategic response and hope that this year is better.
Real quick, and you are correct, that is, that's the area that we're actually most productive. And so we write double-digit numbers of citations every year, and that's the time that we focus is when they start to assemble, and that's when we're most productive. When the crowds do grow large, sometimes we do have to pull back and be more defensive so that no one gets hurt. But our most effective times are when the parties are starting up, and that's when we seem to make the biggest impact. I appreciate that.
I think Councilmember Pease has a question for you as well.
No, I was moving on to Consent Agenda. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Chief. I know that March 7th, we'll hear from you more.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
And City Attorney, can you actually, I should have asked you this earlier, to share about the process of expanding a safety enhancement zone?
You have an ordinance that allows the council to enact safety enhancement zones during specified times, so that does need to be enacted by ordinance, and St. Frat's Day is not one of those periods currently designated, so you would need an ordinance amendment.
And that, timing-wise, how long does that take?
Typically, it's about 45 days. So there's an introduction, a second reading, and then the effective date is 30 days after, unless it's an urgency or emergency ordinance, and you would need to make findings supporting that there's an imminent health, safety, or fair threat that needed to be addressed in that manner, and then it would need to be renewed periodically, or there are subsequent actions to validate by the council.
Thank you so much. Did you just mean add? Okay. Councilmember Pease?
Thank you. I wanted to pull the Item 5B, the meeting minutes, from February 11th for that special meeting for separate consideration, discussion, consideration. Minor edits.
Okay, sounds good. So at this point, we'll go ahead and vote on 5A, 5D, 5E, 5F, 5G, 5H, and 5I. Can I have a motion?
Public comment? I think not.
Thank you. Good point. Thank you. So sorry, all. Can I have a public comment? Is anyone public comment for these Consent Agenda items?
No, there's not.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Can we have a motion? We have Vice Mayor Marks's motion, and Councilmember Shoresman, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Marks? Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. And can I get a motion for Item 5C? As in the...
Remove.
Thank you, Councilmember Pease. I'll go ahead and second. And City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marks? Recused.
Thank you. Motion passes four with one recusing. And now we'll move forward to 5B. Councilmember Pease, would you like to add some comments?
Yes, there were two minor ones. I'll start with the 3B from that item, which was the direction for the fiscal year, the budget items, to see if they were ongoing, that we had continued from the prior meeting. The meeting minutes note, are reading, "Provided direction on whether the one-time budget allocation, dah 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 dah." And I wanted to be more specific there, that we provided direction to incorporate one-time budget. So not that we just provide direction, but what direction we provided, just to reflect the record. I think that's pretty minor. The second one, I think, is also a reflection of the intent, but I do want to make sure that we're all on the same page about it. Under the Housing and Homelessness Major City Goal, the content of the goal itself, towards the end, it talks about that we'll collaborate with local nonprofit partners, dah 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 dah, to advocate for increased funding and implementation of comprehensive effective strategies. So minor change is that I believe what we are doing is to advocate for increased funding and to implement. So slight word change, but it shows that we are with our partners, we're both advocating and implementing. Otherwise, the implication is that we are working with our partners to advocate for funding and implementation, kind of almost by others. So I think it's... I know it's a minor point, but to me, it feels important for the goal itself to have the language that we are with our partners, part of implementation of these effective strategies. So if you all are okay with those two slight word tweaks, then I will go ahead and move approval as slightly amended.
Can you say that again? Because to me, it says, "Advocate for increased funding and implementation of." So I'm trying to understand your wording.
Right. So my difference is that that sounds like we are advocating for increased funding and we're advocating for implementation. But then there's nothing else that says that we're implementing. You know what I mean? So, yeah, so that's the difference, is that we are advocating and implementing.
Okay. Councilmember Shoresman?
I had a different... I had a different item that I wanted to ask for clarification on there. I guess in regards to what Councilmember Pease is saying, I can see what she's saying. It sounds like, by the way it reads now, it's maybe the grammar isn't quite right, and it should be advocate for increased funding and implement comprehensive effective strategies to prevent and reduce, excuse me, homelessness. Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Pease?
Yeah. Either to implement or just implement. But yes, that there's kind of... And I apologize, I don't want to be wordsmithing, but I think it actually does change the meaning in this case. So, yeah.
Councilmember Shoresman, can we finish this one issue before we go to the next one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would be okay with the change that Councilmember Pease is proposing. I agree that we are advocating, and we also want to implement in partnership with other entities, so.
Yes, and I was actually advocating for funding and for the people who are typically accountable and continue to care to actually implement their work. So when I was talking about that on Saturday, that was what I was thinking. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, I think we're kind of looking for both and in the language, because obviously some of these are going to be implemented in partnership with these other agencies. So I totally get where you're coming from. I think it doesn't read correctly now, but maybe somehow to reword that so that both are included.
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yeah, I just had an idea that we could say advocate for, you know, advocate for implementation, comma, on the part of all of our partners, including the city, comma, just a little qualifier in there after, because we don't want to... I'm agreeing with Mayor Stewart, that we want to advocate for implementation by everybody, including us. So I think it might be possible to just see if staff can come back with the wording later. Would that work?
Yeah, maybe. Clever staff after the break.
I like that idea.
We can work on this, and we can just have this item trail. We can come back and work on some language.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Shoresman, you had a separate comment?
Yeah, in that same goal, under the bullets below the actual goal language, there's in addition, there's five bullets, and I believe the last bullet is partner with other agencies for more emergency and transitional housing through the Home Keys Program instead of House Keys. I believe House Keys is something different. So I think...
That's correct, yeah. We'll note that change, and then so we'll make that change, and then we'll trail the wording on this, and we'll come back. So just so I understand, the intent of council is to provide language to advocate for increased funding with the county, city partners, and the city to implement comprehensive effective strategies to prevent and reduce homelessness and chronic homelessness. Okay, so we'll work on some language, and we'll throw it up on the screen after the break.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll see you all at 7:10. All right, thanks, everybody. We'll go ahead and get back to the council meeting. And we'll move forward to the public hearing and business items section six A, which is adopting potentially the 2023 Access and Parking Management Plan with Public Works Director Matt Horn and Parking Program Manager Gavin Hussey. Not actually at all. Sorry, just reading my script along. I'm sure Matt Horn will introduce the rest of your team.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. So good afternoon, or good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. And thank you for your time while we were crafting the next version of our parking access, excuse me, our Access and Parking Management Plan. You will hear me use that term interchangeably tonight. If I mess it up, it's my apology. It's the Access and Parking Management officially, but I will call it the Parking and Access Management Plan multiple times. So it is an update to our existing plan, an update that occurred, I guess originally in early 2000s, last one was updated in 2011. This version is the 2023 version, which is a major update to the Parking and Access Management Plan. The, the, the reason for the major update is largely due to aligning, aligning the plan with the city's goals. So mobility is interlaced in this document throughout. See, we've got mobility considerations, transportation mode shift is incorporated in this document, and also climate action. So it's interlaced with the city's priorities. The plan presents goals, strategies, and action items that will guide parking and demand management throughout the city. So the update specifically focuses on action items, action items that we can implement now and for the next five years until 2028. Let's see. So for, for so to, you know, this is a, this is a fairly large work effort in this Parking and Access Management Plan. I just wanted to let you know how we're planning to align resources for it. So in, in the Public Works Department, we have two divisions right now. We're creating a third division to strictly focus on mobility. So mobility in San Luis Obispo is predominantly done through our parking program, our slow transit program, our transit service program, and our active transportation program. And integrating those three programs through one common form of leadership for Deputy Director of Mobility and in focusing them on several of our documents to, to align mobility efforts is very important for the city. It's very important to implement this document or a version of this document that we finally land on. We've done this before in the department with our maintenance and engineering programs. You'll see probably better resource alignment, better focus on, 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 on vision and in interchanging of resources to make things come to fruition. Examples are like the downtown lighting, our storm response. With engineering, we've been able to focus on just off-maintenance projects and on to maintenance and improvement projects. And so you see roadway projects interlaced with electrical or traffic signal plan improvements. The downtown project that we'll be cutting a room for on the 28th was predominantly done through both maintenance and improvements in the engineering world. And we added 14, 19 ADA spaces with that project. So we were able to maintain our roads, do an improvement, and then add facilities for it. So interlacing, like work through a centralized management, will provide us the resources that we need to implement this plan and how we can, how we can do that. And let me just, let's see. And so this, this Parking and Access Management Plan, it's, it's a, as our city manager calls it, it's the general plan for our, for our parking program. And that's really what it is. It's a framework, it's policy, it's strategies, it's action items to implement. What it is not, it's not a fee study. And so what we're trying to do is create the framework for how we want to operate the program, the rules for, for how we'll engage. And then after that, we can, we can, we can develop fees that go along with it. I guess to say it plainly, we need to figure out what we want to charge for before we can figure out how we want to charge people for it. And so that's really the intent of what coming forward with the framework first and the fee studies second. So I know everyone's going to want to talk about costing, hours free, stuff like that. And we'll be here to support that conversation. Just know that primarily, we're here for the framework tonight. We're hoping to get your thoughts and feedback. This is a great opportunity for public engagement. And so we can have people's input tonight, get your input as well, and craft the final document. If you'd flip to the next, next slide. Ultimately, we're looking for adoption of the, of the Parking and Access Management Plan tonight. We're also looking for direction or approval from council to develop a locals, locals incentive for, for parking in the downtown as well. So those are the two items. We have our whole team of folks here to help us through tonight. So we have Gavin Hussey, our Parking Services Manager. We have Alex Fuchs, our former Parking Supervisor, now Canvas Business Manager. We have our coordinator, sorry. We have Luis Leon, he is new Parking Service Supervisor. We have Luke Schwartz, of course, needs no introduction. And then we have the fine folks from Walker Consultant, who really kind of developed the vision, implementation, the community outreach, and did a lot of work to kind of create this plan for us. And so with that, I'll hand it off to Walker. Thank you very much.
Yes, hold on one second.
Okay, hello. All right. Thank you, Public Works Director Horn, for that introduction. And thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council for your time and attention to this plan tonight and the many months preceding that we've been meeting with you and collaborating with you since about June, so the past nine months or so. We're here as, as the, pardon me, I thought I was getting some stage direction there. Again, we're here to propose and quickly walk through the Access and Parking Management Plan update. As you've seen, it's a lengthy document. We can't go through it in excruciating detail tonight, but we're going to try to give you a rundown from top to bottom about some of the content and the process to create it. So an Access and Parking Management Plan can be used to achieve multiple goals within a city and environment. San Luis Obispo's plan is a guiding document for providing effective management approaches to meet broader goals and objectives, such as the boat split goal to boost walking, bicycling, and using transit, and the net zero emissions goal. More than anything, these five boxes on the screen describe the principles that guide this plan update process and recommendations. It's a framework for parking management within broader city goals, proposing both immediate and long-term actions that improve access and parking for everyone, and as a steward of budget and financial considerations within parking services and citywide. Moreover, this plan responds to several big efforts that you approved before this update began. This includes the Active Transportation Plan as a major guide to active transportation needs and investments, the Climate Action Plan with lots of complementary actions around transportation innovation, and two major parking projects underway, the new Cultural Arts District parking structure, and the parking rate price increases over the next several years for daily parking rates. And it's important to remember that those are the daily rates, not increases to long-term parking permits and parking passes, with the revenue from those rate increases going to fund that new structure and to handle some of the maintenance needs of your existing parking assets. And quite frankly, that new structure and those rate increases already approved before this plan update even began are probably the two most significant parking impacts people are going to feel in the next couple of years, more so than any single action of this Access and Parking Management Plan update. That said, all the actions of this plan combined That said, all the actions of this plan combined add up to a pretty exhaustive look at how access and parking management recommendations support big city goals and the nuts and bolts of parking services operations, with recommendations ranging from new types of parking permits to technology-driven wayfinding to a refreshed transportation education program. As Mr. Horn mentioned, this is an update, a significant update, uh, but of the 2002 Access and Parking Management Plan, uh, which had some significant goals and policies put in place, including a bus subsidy program for downtown employees, uh, linkages to improving bicycle access in downtown, reducing, uh, the free parking in structures from 90 minutes to 60, and increasing the two-hour parking supply and long-term parking limits in the commercial core. All four of those programs still exist today in some capacity. And then the 2011 update focused more on, uh, updates to residential parking permits uh, in, in linkages to your city code regulation updates that happen at the same time. Again, we keep talking about the relationship of this plan update to other things going on in your community. Pardon me, lost my place here a little bit. Um, this plan has always supported the goals outlined in your general plan circulation element and your downtown concept plan, you know, which have existed in different iterations for decades now, and both of which have been updated significantly since 2011. The city has also adopted those new policy documents, such as the Active Transportation Plan and the Climate Action Plan for Community Recovery, that are not explicitly referenced in your current APMP. This is the first APMP to really fully correspond with those. Each action in this new plan includes references to some of the key goals and influences and policies of those four plans on screen here. This additional and in-depth alignment of the APMP with other city plans is a significant new feature of this version of the plan, whereas past versions were more circumscribed within the parking realm. So as mentioned, this project has been underway since about June, first ramping up with parking counts in July and then September in the downtown core, as well as in the preferential parking permit districts, and doing a bunch of background plan review, where we learned about the influences of those four plans previously on the screen, among others. Uh, September was quite busy for us on the consultant team. Uh, we were here for a site investigation. We conducted many of the stakeholder interviews that occurred during the project. We launched the citywide online survey, and we conducted the virtual town hall. So that really kicked off our public engagement, our resourcing and effort there. Through October and November, we analyzed data, we processed community input, and started outlining recommendations. Also in November, we met with the Active Transportation Committee and conducted small 2-2-1 city council meetings with some of you all. This was followed by a planning commission review meeting and other, and another citywide online poll in December. In December and January, based on the request of planning commissioners and you all, city councillors, we did another round of stakeholder interviews with several additional groups at your recommendation. And finally, this year, over the past two months, we've been preparing and issuing the plan document now in front of you for consideration. So to get into the process of this plan a little bit, uh, I'm going to summarize some of the community outreach and community input methods that we went through and some of the key findings of those. The first we want to highlight are some of those stakeholder meetings. Those occurred from August through December of last year. We covered a massive, significantly wide range of topics. The details of those are in the appendix to this plan. Uh, you, you can browse those at your leisure. But some of these that we wanted to highlight, um, you'll see reflected in the actions and recommendations that are later developed in this plan process. So to point number one, just to highlight one, the Parklit program. People have been curious about the, the future of it and what it means with the allocation of space in your downtown environment. We know you've recently updated the rules and the pricing of this Parklit program to transform it into a long-term feature of downtown, not just an emergency COVID-based response to outdoor dining requirements. We really hope that program thrives for you. And how we link it to this plan is thinking of it as a way of recognizing alternative uses of downtown space. The fact that that permit is going to cost about $7,000 a year is really reflective of how valuable that square footage in your downtown is. Another question was about coordinating transportation and parking to universities and understanding their impacts on surrounding areas. The city will continue to work with the schools and other major destinations for everything from planning bikeways and transit service changes to managing parking. The preferential parking permit districts are one tool at your disposal to help alleviate parking spillover, both near the schools and anywhere else in town that you may need it. Then the third point here reflects that as people begin to adjust to the new daily parking increases coming the next few years, they also wonder what's happening with long-term permit and passes, uh, pricing, and other affordability programs. As you know, while the city voted to raise parking prices for on-street lots and garages that are publicly operated, the city explicitly chose not to increase the price of employee proxy cards, resident drop proxy cards, and the 10-hour meter permits. The rates on these programs were kept static as a measure to address concerns about employee retention and access to downtown. And in establishing these rates, city staff reviewed other local community examples and did the math to identify the revenue needs necessary to support a healthy parking fund and complete some of those longstanding city capital and maintenance initiatives. This plan does recommend doing further study on the use, pricing, and impacts of long-term passes, with changing the price open for consideration if warranted. This plan doesn't make that decision, it just recommends further study. And of course, that study would require a significant investigation of the impacts of that pricing on parking services revenue, equitable parking access, and impacts on people's wallets. Additionally, recommendation number two, as part of tonight's council review, asks you to consider that locals incentive parking program with the related goal of supporting affordable parking options for those who need it. Getting into some of the other, uh, engagement methods and events that we went through. In September of last year, we did a community online survey with nearly 300 responses. Some of the key outcomes of this that you'll see laced through the plan, really influential, the recommendations are up on screen here. This includes roughly 50% of people, um, you find it very easy to walk, bike, or use transit to get downtown. That also suggests a group of people, uh, ripe to be targeted for improvements in that realm, who may be encouraged to shift to those modes for some choices with infrastructure, safety, and programmatic investments. 95% of people think it's very or somewhat important to provide space for active travel modes in downtown. But we also had frequent comments about parking being confusing in terms of regulations, uncertainty about enforcement practices, and a lack of awareness of parking options. Unsurprisingly, proximity, price, and ease are the biggest factors influencing people's parking decision. And as we got into, uh, starting to explore solutions a little bit, we saw that nearly 50% of people support ideas for improving parking wayfinding, creating shared parking agreements, adding more loading and drop-off zones, and other strategies to generally increase parking supply. We recognize that these strategies can be a bit obscure and wonky, and it might make it hard for people to fully comprehend how it might impact their parking options and overall parking options in the community. So again, that points to the need for further education and encouragement programs whenever a new program is brought online. Also in September, we did that virtual town hall, a couple-hour online event with a dedicated group of attendees, where we used a program to do real-time polling. So the question we've screenshot here from that event, we were asking people in areas such as downtown slow, where there's lots of destinations and restaurants, how important is it to provide space for each of these following uses? There was strong support among this group for active uses, gathering spaces, transit, and commercial uses in the street, compared with a bit less importance, at least from these voters placed on parking for various users. Also in that larger September survey with roughly 300 participants, we asked a similar question about how to prioritize space in the public right-of-way. You'll see it was nearly a 50-50 split, uh, and with strong opinions on, on both ends of the scale there about prioritizing parking space versus prioritizing space for bike lanes, transit, curbside dining, delivery zones, and other uses. This plan seeks to address both sides of this kind of issue. And as we will see later on in this presentation, that overall, your parking utilization rate has some slack and some room to wiggle in it. Some of this boils down to where are the most in-demand and functional places in the street to provide parking versus where is it most necessary to provide gathering and active use spaces? In that same survey, we also wanted to probe at some early ideas for solutions. It was only September, it was early in the process yet, but straw pulling a little bit. And so we asked people to vote on which of the following active mobility solutions would they be willing to consider? Pardon me. Uh, and so it's strong votes here for strategies such as improving sidewalk conditions and connectivity, improving public transportation frequency and route options, and providing cash benefits to downtown employees. We see that there's a margin of users who could be enticed into, uh, you know, more encouragement and use of those active modes with the right kind of investment. One thing we want to emphasize here is that we hear a lot, through this, heard a lot through this engagement process, negative perceptions of parking opportunities and availability in downtown slow. And don't worry, we hear that in every town we work in. But we know that those negative experiences are often shaped right on the margin, and that things like a street that has 90% parking utilization is much more likely to feel congested and have a lot of vehicle circulation compared to one that's even 80% occupied. Small change in parking, but a big change in the experience. And that's the kind of change that we think this plan can help create. It both helps change some of your mode choice options for people in this community and improves the parking experience with some of those low-hanging fruit policies. In December, another group that we met with, um, it's one of the follow-up stakeholder meetings, it's with the Downtown Slow Parking and Access Committee. This is a group of folks, business owners, employees, who have a lot of experience and expertise about how people get to downtown, particularly the people who've come downtown every single day as part of their livelihood, and often during peculiar hours of the day, unusual commute patterns. Some of the topics that came up in that meeting were an interest from that group in keeping the first hour free. And this specific plan, this APMP update, has no comment on that program. City council, of course, may consider it as a separate action, along with a local parking incentive. It's part of, the second part of tonight's resolution. Parking and Access Committee members wanted to understand and ensure that there are options for safe and reasonably priced, uh, parking and travel options to downtown. As mentioned, the proxy card and the 10-hour meter permits are not increasing in price currently, though this plan does, as mentioned, recommend evaluating that price, as you would with all your parking pricing, and adding additional options for travel, such as bulk purchases of single-day parking passes, an expanded transportation wallet program, and continued investment in the walking and biking infrastructure, such as what you're ripping cutting just next week. Finally, the Access and Parking Committee really wanted to emphasize the importance of education, communication, and marketing about all of these programs and travel options, whether it's the Downtown Access Pass, it's been very successful in recent years, or new programs and options that come online, regardless of mode. They want to form strong partnerships with as many folks as possible to spread the word and engage stakeholders and participants in those programs. And then the last bit on this community engagement summary were two groups that we met with, you know, expert groups in this topic area. Uh, the Active and Transportation Committee, or Active Transportation Committee, who we met with in November, and then Planning Commission in December of last year. This plan and its recommendations described a parking cash-out action and the potential impacts of that. And then builds upon things like that Downtown Access Pass, which in partnership with Downtown Slow is providing free employee transit use. Programs such as a transportation wallet, which we mentioned earlier, could expand the opportunity to fund other modes of travel, whether it's bike share, ride-share programs if needed, purchasing bicycles, just generally expanding transportation money in people's wallets for other transportation choices. There are other cities that we studied in our case studies that even went so far, or have gone so far, as to make things like the Downtown Access Pass available, not just to employees, but also residents of certain neighborhoods who choose to opt in. This is just a snapshot of the outreach that influenced these recommendations. I'm going to hand it over now to my colleague Chrissy, uh, who's going to walk you through some of the additional steps and the content of more of this plan.
Is it on? Thank you. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thanks again for having us today. We're excited to talk about our favorite topic, parking and transportation. So I want to walk through some of the existing conditions that we found. Uh, we started by studying the, the downtown area and collecting data and parking utilization data. And we collected that data during four times in July and September, so that we can understand what are the parking conditions. And so in total, we found there are about 2,700 spaces in downtown slow. And we conducted the parking counts throughout the day. Uh, the patterns here are pretty typical of what we see in many communities. You have a lunchtime peak, you have an early evening peak. Um, and I want to emphasize that in parking, we have a threshold we aim for, and that's the 85% threshold. So at 85%, the parking, um, is used efficiently, but there's also a few spaces open on the street so that people can easily find parking, and they're not circling and causing safety issues to find that parking and emissions. But once you hit over 85%, then you're starting to feel full, and it's very congested. So we're trying to stay under that 85%, so people aren't circling and, and parking is more convenient. So you can see the graph on the left is the Thursday parking count. That was the, the peak time of all four days, um, 7:00 PM during farmer's market. Um, this was the only time that we observed that the parking exceeded 85%. And even then, it was only for off-street spaces, not even on-street spaces. Um, on the right, you'll see the Saturday count. That was a, more of a typical Saturday, not a farmer's market Saturday. Um, and, you know, again, parking did not exceed 85% um, or get close to that 85% line. So, you know, July and September utilization rates were also very similar. There was some higher rate utilization in July, but, um, mostly the same, um, data that we're seeing. Right, so these maps show the peak parking times spatially, and which gives you a slightly different look on how the parking demand is distributed. So there are areas of red, and those are areas- So there are areas of red and those are areas that are 85% utilized and above. And then the areas of green, which have a lot of parking availability. So while overall there's parking available, you know, even during that farmer's market, you can see that there's congestion and peaks by block that can be detrimental to people's experience. That's why you hear, oh, there's a parking problem because they're going to the core area and they're, you know, they can't find parking. So, but I want to, you know, state that even during the Thursday farmer's market, there were about 350 spaces available. Most of those spaces were on the periphery as shown in the green on this map. And even on the typical Saturday, there were still 1,050 spaces available. But, you know, we want to note that the parking structures were very impacted with two over 85% utilized during the farmer's market and the Saturday peak. So that is a very interesting finding because usually you see the on street is more utilized than the off street. But here it's a little different. So this just shows that, you know, parking where we, where people want to park, that's congested. So when you think about long term, the downtown concept plan, which calls for removing of spaces to create more bike lanes and wider sidewalks, you know, that's going to impact parking availability in the core. You know, there's also the goal to have more residential downtown. Hopefully those residents would walk and bike to downtown destinations. So that's where you see how the new garage located in this area will facilitate advancing those citywide goals and repurposing that curb from parking to bike lanes and getting more parking availability in the parking structures. So we also surveyed parking demand in the parking permit districts and, you know, overall there are about 1,750 spaces in those districts. In July, they were only 26% occupied. In September, there was a slight uptick to 51%. Overall, the utilization was low, but we understand there is congestion block by block and that can be detrimental to people's experiences. So we are looking at how can we use enforcement or virtual permits to better ensure that there's compliance of people parking in those districts. We also explored best practices as Ben talked about to learn about, you know, what other cities are doing that we can apply to San Luis Obispo. And this plan, we talked a very detailed appendix where you can review. These are some of the highlights throughout the plan. We identify where case studies and policies and programs were influential and helping determine some of the best actions for San Luis Obispo. You can see here on the slide in Boulder are actions that you're already taking like discounted regional passes, you know, occupancy based price adjustments, things like that, that we can move forward on immediately. So with the community input, all the work that we did around existing conditions, that helped inform the development of our draft goals and our policies and strategies for the plan update. So there are two overall arching goals under which all the policies and strategies are organized. The first goal, goal one is focused on mode shift and emissions reduction. So citywide goals established over the past few years, you know, we looked at those goals that you've already approved as a charge to understand, well, how does parking access and access can help the city achieve those targets? By making biking and walking and transit more attractive than driving alone through reducing subsidies for parking, creating more investments for active transportation and transit, and then reducing the barriers to active transportation and just overall increasing awareness of these travel options. So through this goal, we realized that San Luis Obispo today, that does not mean everyone will have the option to ride transit. We know there are barriers. We know that not everyone can bike or walk to downtown. What we're doing is laying the groundwork. So when that option is more of reality, people can choose that. But we, to walk and bike and ride transit, but we also want to make it easier for those people who can walk and bike and ride transit today to have those options, to be aware of those options. Nearby residents, encourage them to walk and bike so that they're not driving. And that frees up the parking for those people who do need to drive and park, who can't use those other options. And then the second goal is parking operational focus, so to support parking services using the spaces more efficiently and ensuring fiscal responsibility, just overall improving the customer service. So we want to walk through those goals and highlight a couple of actions with each, in each of them. So the recommendations related to goal one is the mode shift and emissions reductions. One of the first actions we mentioned earlier, it's about expanding the parking permit option. So this is expanding the option, the parking permits to include a daily pass to the current program. We are, this is step one, we are not saying you should take away any of the existing monthly and quarterly passes. This is just about providing a daily pass to drivers. In further steps, you can study, is it feasible to gradually reduce the monthly and quarterly passes? You know, we don't know exactly where that will settle out because you need to evaluate it. We need to understand how the offering of daily passes would influence parking demand, what it means for affordability. But the theme here is that people get to make the choice every day of whether they want to drive and park. We're not forcing them to buy a monthly pass or a quarterly pass and spend maybe more than they want to on parking. You know, if they make that choice daily, they might choose to not drive and park. Or, you know, maybe they want to work from home, maybe they want to bike, but they can have that option each day. We're not taking something away from them or just giving them more options. And then the second recommendation under goal one is to create incentives for active transportation and transit. So this is about how can technology help people use other modes and have other choices? So we're recommending a transportation wallet that can be offered to downtown employees. So instead of just offering them a parking permit, they can have that same dollar value with either a transit pass, a bike pass, bike subsidy. You know, within that wallet, there's lots of options that you can include in the wallet. You can increase the size of the benefit for low income people. The goal here, again, it's not to take away anything, it's just to expand options. So, you know, again, if people don't want to pay for the full price of that monthly pass, well, now they have an option to do something different. And this will again, help with mode share, with emissions reductions and really achieve those citywide goals that are already in place. And then policy one C tracks to the active transportation plan, which we've already talked about. The active transportation plan, there's holds a lot of information about how the city will move forward on all these active transportation investments. But, you know, as parking services takes a look at all the right of way, all of the room that parking holds, the updated guidance of the access and parking management plan will influence how the city balances between those different uses of the streets. So we're just recommending here to coordinate all of the parking planning and investments with the active transportation investments. And then lastly, under goal one, policy one D, we talked about how we heard from during outreach that education and what are the options or how do, you know, how do we pay for parking, things like that. We're confusing. So we want to provide more education to people so that people traveling to San Luis Obispo know their options. The city is already refreshing some of these ideas at like it's a chance to partner with SlowCOG, with universities, downtown slow, even housing providers, so that you can have educational material for new residents and existing residents. So we're recommending to provide transportation information directly to residents on an annual basis. Things like walking maps, transit schedules, even parking permanent information so that they're well informed of all the different travel options in San Luis Obispo. I will hand it back to Ben to finish up.
What I'm learning here is to bring the microphone to me, not to go to the microphone. Live and learn. All right. To wrap this up, on goal two, talking about parking services success, to continue to build upon the history of parking management that is efficient, financially sound, convenient for users and usable by everyone from daily drivers to one time tourist visitors. This is really bread and butter within the parking services division. But as we've talked about, there's a lot more influences into this access and parking management plan. It creates a lot more nuance and subtlety in these, these recommendations. So with policy two A, using parking pricing to influence demand and distribution, we want to introduce the idea of more formal demand based pricing. So demand based pricing is simply the process of matching supply and demand, something we're all pretty familiar with. And you already have a basic version of this with higher parking prices in the core and lower on the edge, higher parking prices on street and lower in garages and lots. Your switch to more smart meters and apps and away from coin meters is one step that will make demand based pricing easier to implement and more nimble. In the busiest parking areas, you know, those ones that exceeded that 85% threshold at times, you may want to study those long term and consider them for some price increases. Correspondingly, in an area in typically low usage, you may want to look at price reductions to help make that area more appealing to different parking users. Demand based pricing works in concert with other strategies to help balance parking use. It's one of the ways that you can fine tune your pricing and time limits to serve different users, which is a key theme of this plan. And policy two B, talking about regulating the curb to influence demand and distribution. And the action we bring to bear here is reducing the number of 10 hour parking meter spaces in your on street environment. And you would do this by gradually transitioning those 10 hour meter spaces into two hour meter spaces. Not getting rid of parking supply, but just changing the regulation there to help align with your goal of promoting that shorter term customer and visitor parking on street and really directing longer term parkers to your lots and garages. Policy two C is about using technology and wayfinding to improve the parking experience. There's a lot we could really talk about in terms of the use of technology in this industry. But one we want to highlight in two C four is to continue your transition to virtual parking permits. You already use this in some capacity with your enforcement practices. Pardon me. Paper documents, goodness. Virtual permits, you know, do end up unlocking a lot of subtle opportunities in your management structure. They're more efficient and more accurate to enforce. They offer better information to customers about parking regulations and literally how much time they have left on the clock, which is a major user concern. And they can be much more flexible and dynamic when linked with things like demand based pricing and other management tools. Because you're tied just to, you know, ones and zeros in an app instead of a paper permit or hardware linked to your payments systems. Yes, you are already using virtual permits in some capacity. And as you swap out those coin meters and potentially expand virtual permits to your preferential parking permit districts, that gives you other areas in which you can roll out the system for more nuanced enforcement practices. And then finally, speaking of those preferential parking permit districts. It's not advanced. Well, we're, we're missing a slide, it appears. So, so you'll have to trust me that this exists. We, speaking of preferential parking permit districts in category. It did appear. Okay. There we go. Okay. Pardon me. We want you to make sure to bring more robust data and evaluation to these preferential parking districts before considering establishing any new ones. The key action that we recommend here is looking for some minimum baseline of utilization, potentially 60 to 70% as a consistent parking utilization number before you start taking the other steps involved in your PPP establishment, you know, which involves neighborhood outreach, the 60% vote threshold and other steps that you're familiar with here. So this is just a practice of bringing more robust data, sort of investigation to defining the actual need in a neighborhood. And we know that exists here with parking spillover issues. And as some of these other parking programs take hold, you know, new neighborhoods may experience some of those negative externalities essentially. So PPPs used robustly and managed well can be a really important tool in your arsenal if they're data driven. So this is essentially where the access and parking management plan ends at the end of the document. These detailed actions and plans, there are 37 actions and we're merciful consultants. So we're not going to go through all of those tonight, but we hope that the eight that we discussed here, linking to the eight policies and the two key goals, give you a robust framework for the next five years for improving the access and parking management systems in your downtown, citywide, in neighborhoods that need it and set you up for success in promoting mode choices and fair and equitable access for everyone in this community. Thank you for your time and I think we all are available for questions now.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for a very thorough presentation and all the time you've spent in our community. You know, in and out, I'm sure somewhat virtual and in person. And I will pass it on to questions for the council members right now. Council member Frances.
Thank you so much. I'm going to start with just a quick question. I'm so glad that you all are here. I had a chicken and egg question. And I know you've done a lot of looking at the case studies around in other communities and you've gone and done work in other communities. And so I was wondering if you'd talk a little bit about the data we have to support the idea that these actions will actually serve to encourage mode shift.
So we've worked in some of the case study communities I've worked in and working with now. So for example, in Ann Arbor, the, what's called the downtown development authority, they operate all the parking in conjunction with the city. And the downtown development authority created what's called the make way for people program and put a lot of funding from parking into building out protected bike lanes. And we really took a look at protected bike lanes, not just downtown, but where are people traveling from? And what options do they have other than driving? And so the city also shut down a lot of streets during the summer for active transportation and for, you know, community gathering. And they did, they are starting to see now, this program has only been in place for, I believe, three years, but they're starting to see now that more people are biking and walking and it's a small mode shift initially. And, you know, we were talking about this, you know, even a 1% mode shift is hu, that's a huge amount of people that have decided to walk and bike and are now not parking. So, you know, I think we've seen it take some time, but for example, in Boulder, they originally had the eco pass for transit. And when we worked on their parking and access management plan last year, we implemented demand based pricing and we figured out, well, if we implement demand based pricing, we actually will have some more revenue to fund even greater eco pass and the neco pass for, you know, for residents. And Boulder has seen, I can pull up the numbers, but they've seen a significant mode shift in people that are riding transit than parking. And it, it was a combination of the pricing, but also just using those revenues for the transit passes and actually having that, that dollar amount.
Thank you so much. That kind of actually leads into my, my next question, which is a lot of this plan kind of hinges on people choosing to bike or bus or be a pedestrian. And we've done an incredible job as a city is just really killing it with the bike and pet infrastructure. But I know that the thing I'm seeing a lot of people request is some sort of downtown shuttle system. This probably gets into more of a staff question here, like bringing back the trolley, getting ways for people to get into that inner core if they're doing what they're supposed to do, parking on the outskirts and taking some sort of transit in. You know, how are we going to help facilitate that as we're moving towards this plan quickly? Where, where does that other piece come in?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think we would actually do that with two separate studies we're doing. So we have a transit innovation study that's going on right now. And then of course, the short range transit plan, which will take the transit innovation study and put it into action items. So coupling of those two plans, along with this plan and our mobility director overseeing all of these plans and linking them together, the best way to, to enhance mobility in the downtown.
Thank you so much. And can you just remind me of the timeline on those two studies?
Yes. So we, we are about four or five months out from the transit innovation study coming to fruition. And then after that, we'll move into the short range transit plan. So late summer, 2023, we'll start the short range transit plan.
Thank you so much. I think city manager wanted to respond to that too.
So I think part of this is a little bit of chicken and egg, right? Because we don't know ultimately, I think to Chris's point is, you know, well, what is going to be the additional revenue? you know, well, what is going to be the additional revenue from demand-based pricing? What does that new pricing structure look like? What do all these programs start to then materialize to then for the council to have some of the policy discussions? Well, if we have more revenue, how do we want to use that revenue? Are we going to use it for active transportation funding? And are we going to fund some of the strategies in the shorter-range transit plan? So, and we've been asked the question, well, how much more revenue is going to come from demand and pricing? We don't know. I think that was, that is really well localized. We won't know when we shift ultimately to gateless technologies. What is going to be the additional revenue? And the answer is, we don't know. We can get some ideas of how much attrition we might have. But I think ultimately, the end, we want to make sure we put those programs in place and then be in the position to say, well, now we've got some time under our belt. What is the revenue that these programs are throwing off? How much does it cost to administer these programs? And then, consistent with this framework, this policy, then what do we want to use the funding to advance some of the other motor objectives?
Thank you. You have to press the button.
Okay, come back there. Great. Just one last question. I'm not sure if you'll have an answer to it, but one of the things that I thought was really curious in the study that you did was that utilization of garages, since you said that was kind of a challenge in a lot of communities. And I was wondering if there was a, if you had a hypothesis around why there was higher utilization here, since that is one of the things we want to encourage people to do. So great, we've done it. Was that something we did? Or is that so we can sort of replicate that and looking for encouraging people to do other shifts?
There are probably several issues that go towards that, but I think the garages are located in the core, which in many cities, they might be on the periphery. So that's where people are used to just going straight to the garage, parking there. And so I think the location makes a huge difference.
Thank you so much. I'll pass it on to somebody else. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for the great report, as always. There was one item that you discussed about converting, I think it's in the plan, possibly considering converting 10-hour spaces to 2-hour spaces. If I'm not mistaken, a lot of the 10-hour curbside spaces are already kind of outside the main part of the core. And that area is kind of underutilized already. So, you know, there's a spot that I go to frequently that has 10-hour meters and they're almost always empty. So what does that get us to convert those meters to 2-hours when they're already sort of underutilized?
Yeah, so I'll tackle that one. So the goal here is a long-term goal. Us transitioning the 10-hour meter spaces to 2-hour meters is not going to be done immediately. As we get more people into the parking structures, we'll slowly start to convert them where they are being overly impacted or at a higher impact in the far outlying areas. So it is a long-term goal for us to slowly convert all those, especially as the city starts to develop more and stuff does start to creep out. We'll see that transition of the 10-hour meter spaces to the 2-hour meter spaces.
Okay. And this is kind of along the lines of Councilmember Frances's questions. But, you know, over the last year or two, since we've added a lot of the new bike infrastructure in the downtown core, we've periodically gotten comments from the public saying, well, I never see people using those. And I know there's a lot of other cities that have taken big efforts to convert a lot of their street space to more pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. And so I'm just wondering, there are others that have done this before us. How long is it, it doesn't, it's not going to happen overnight. It's not like if you build it, they will come tomorrow. How long does it take in other places before they see a significant shift? Is there any models around that or information, best practices from other cities so far that have done such things?
I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a model, but we know that within the Active Transportation Plan, a majority of respondents said they would bike more if there were the bike infrastructure and protected lanes and they felt more comfortable. So, you know, slowly building that out will increase the bike share mode. I don't know that we could say within a year or two. It's more about people seeing that this option exists and explaining to them. So that's why we want to send mailers home. We want to publicize where the bike valet is at the farmer's market or where even bike parking is, secure bike parking, so that people feel, well, once I get downtown, I can lock my bike and it will be secure, because that's another barrier. So all of those things together really need to be in place for people to feel comfortable.
We did seek public comment explaining that as well, that they were afraid to park their bikes. So I appreciate that. See you, Luke.
Testing. Thanks. Luke Schwartz, Transportation Manager. I just want to note, we are still in the process of collecting after-study counts on March and Higera Streets with the completion of the most recent downtown paving work. We do have some counts on Higera Street that showed about a 25% increase when we striped the bike lane that didn't exist, say, as a pilot project. So that's comparing the pre-COVID numbers to data as of last spring. So we'll be expecting to see similar, higher increases on the street. We have the continuous protected bike lane. So we'll have more data to share in that in a couple of months.
And this last one might be a question for staff. I don't know if you know the programs locally, but we do have, SlowCog has a program where you can log your trips that you do by bike or by foot, and they will pay you in gift cards, you know, a certain amount per trip. And so I'm just wondering, some of the programs that are sort of implied that we might look at are sort of a similar type of thing, where you would get a cash out for using an alternate form of transportation? Just wondering if we have any data from SlowCog on what that entails and what that could improve to, or what we think aspirationally that could improve to if we added some more programming like that?
From our talks with SlowCog and where the programs, incentives they offer, I'm not sure that I've seen any data, the total level of participation. I know that they've seen some increases, but I don't think we have any direct data to see how that has or has not shifted the mode shift throughout the city.
It's also not probably a very well-publicized program, which I think a great part of this plan is that you're talking about a lot of communication. So anyway, that's all the questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease.
All right. Sorry, thank you. The questions that I have about are about the preferential parking permit districts. And I know that there are a couple of action items that you had about that. One that you mentioned in particular about establishing them and kind of having a data-driven process. I appreciate that. There's also the idea of if they're underutilized, could those be, have a commuter pass? There is also suggestions about 2-hour park-free unless you have a permit or a, maybe there is even a parking kiosk like the rest of downtown, but you're exempt if you're, if you have that parking permit. It's all kind of license plate driven. And I'm wondering if that's something, if those are the other kinds of options. And obviously, it's mostly in the areas not around downtown. So it would be, I think about the businesses along Foothill, that they might be impacted and where, so that 2-hour or just visiting folks. I'm wondering if there's just kind of other types of opportunities we should be exploring in those residential-type districts?
Yes, so the answer for that, Councilmember Pease, is we are going to look at other permit options for those areas if approved by council. We want to maximize the use that our community has for our preferential parking districts. We want to serve the people that reside in them. But we also want to make sure that people that are going to utilize them in an appropriate manner do have access to them when they need them. So that is the intent with proposing a limited-time permit in those areas so that people can access it. I would say that the timed overlay, we did try that when we did Dana Street. There was some technological hurdles that we had to deal with there. As we move forward with some of our planning for fleet expansion for the Parking Enforcement Division, there are new technologies that we are incorporating to allow for better chalking and timing of vehicles. So that is something that we are actively looking at. It was not in place when we did Dana Street, and that was one of the hurdles we had to overcome. But we are working with fleet on that step.
Perfect. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Marks.
Yeah, I just have a process question. There's all these action items in this plan. And my question is whether these will be coming back to us individually? I have a ton of comments, which we haven't gotten to yet. But I am a little concerned about approving, I'll call it, the whole enchilada tonight, right? Or are these going to be teased out and brought back to us for fine-tuning?
City Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Marks, this is really the framework. So just similar to your general plan, you've got literally hundreds and hundreds of action items. And so some of these are directive in terms, there's enough definition for us to be able to move forward. In many cases, we've just outlined future concepts and that we need to bring back. And so these will be whole, separate work items unto themselves. So for example, dynamic pricing, the demand-based pricing. If you recall, a few years ago, we had a series of study sessions with the City Council on water rates. And we said, well, what are your objectives? Do you want to, you know, what do you want to achieve? Well, now let's develop a model. Let's play with the model. And then ultimately, the council and the community understood the kind of push-pull between the different pricing structures that we had, based upon ultimately the values and the goals that the council had. So most of this stuff, these action items, will come back to the City Council. We're not getting CarBlanc authority to run out and do a lot of this. You'll have Legitary Authority, you know, for capital improvements or equipment. Or in the case, in many areas, we want to get the consultation and approval that some of these items will require municipal code changes or ordinances to implement many of these programs.
Thank you. Yeah, I also have a really basic kind of overarching concern about the wish to, about the modal shift, okay? And that has to do with EV vehicles. I think everybody on our City Council has got either an electric car or a hybrid. So cars, so transportation is the chief source of emissions, greenhouse gas and all that, if they are combustion engines, right, with gasoline and all that. But electric cars don't have the same impact in terms of climate change that old-fashioned cars do. And I think the premise in this plan and in general, in the history, ever since the first Climate Action Plan in 2010, is to, you know, the modal shift is motivated really largely, this is far as I was concerned, voting for it over and over again, by the fact that we want to reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are, to the extent that we can. So this is a concept, I don't want us, just my, speaking from my own perspective, as a senior citizen with the EV car, yeah, who's done a lot of biking, a lot of walking, but have found as the years go on, and I think I represent maybe 15, 20% of the residents here, that biking and walking long distances is just not as practical. So I'm not talking even about the disabled people or the really elderly people. I'm talking about the active seniors that we have here. And a lot of us are driving electric cars, if you look around. And so I just want to throw out that concept before we, I mean, bicycling is wonderful. Bike paths are wonderful. Been a big fan of mass transit and Chair of the RTA and eight years on that board. But at the same time, I don't want us to be driven by an ideology that is not based in fact when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions. So that's a question. Like, are you guys factoring in to all this analysis the fact that as time goes on, fewer and fewer of these cars are going to be spewing out greenhouse gases?
So I'll take that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. To that point, I think this plan's really trying to get us in alignment with the other plans that have been developed, get us back on track there. I would say that it also gives us the framework so that we can develop programs like car pools, van pools and so forth, that incentivize people to take alternate modes of transportation. Eventually, as Derek mentioned, you know, with council's approval, we could develop programs that focus on EV vehicles and incentivize the trips with EV vehicles over fuel combustion engines. So that's in the framework here for us to work towards programs like that.
Okay. In terms of the parking district, you know, a question that I have, and I think it's been answered by our City Manager, that would be like a whole nother study session and a whole nother set of considerations.
I was typing, so if you could repeat the question.
I'm sorry. No, I just, in terms of the parking districts, I feel that, I mean, having lived in a parking district for, and voted in favor of many of them over the years, I'm concerned about having that whole program either dismantled or in some way jeopardized.
Absolutely. This is the parking, preferred parking program that's enshrined, I believe, in resolution and ordinance as well. So those are both council actions. And so this would be a discreet, separate action item, which we'd have to come back to the council, analyze the pros and cons. You know, what Gavin is humbly not mentioning is that if we allow for shorter-term use in some of the residential areas, it would require us to really shift our enforcement program. Because today, we're enforcing the question, do you have or do you not have a permit? And is it in the hours that someone's parking with or without one? And so the enforcement regime becomes much more complex. And so there's, so that's a long-winded answer to say that all this will come back because we want council, you know, input. We would want a fair amount of community engagement before we brought anything back for adoption.
Yeah, okay. And I may have missed it. It's a great report. I should have started out saying that. You know, it's amazing to me how much thought and expertise has gone into it. And I know Gavin's worked like crazy on it, too. But I didn't find any discussion of asking businesses to supply vouchers, parking vouchers, or in some way help address the cost to their employees and customers. Did I miss it? Or has it, is that not a consideration? It was in there?
Yeah, it's already part of some of the offerings that the city does. We don't advertise it well. That's the call for us to do better communication, which is something we need to do. We have a lot of programs that are tailored towards businesses and towards downtown employees. We want to expand those offerings to make them more user-friendly, more convenient for them to participate in. But that comes with the communication piece that we need to step up.
No, I'm not talking about the city subsidy. I'm talking about the employers.
Correct. There are offerings that we have. We currently call it the Chaser Ticket Program, that businesses can participate in and purchase a ticket for the park structures that reduces the cost for their downtown employee to park in the parking structure.
Okay. Thank you. And the offering means a program, right?
Yes.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frances.
Yes, just a quick aside to Vice Mayor Marks. I think it's also really important that we are thinking about internalizing the externalities of the manufacture of the batteries and the vehicles themselves when we're considering the environmental impact of, you know, the, these cars aren't going to solve all of the problems. It's also going to require these mode shifts, too. And my question, actually, and maybe you were kind of getting at this, that we are going to be talking about this in more detail coming up, but it had to do with the preferential parking permits. And a lot of what we're looking at here is trying to generate enough revenue to maybe fund the other projects that we want to see and the parking garage and all of that stuff. And when we look at our preferential parking permits currently, I know that they don't even pay for themselves. And so I'm hoping that we have an opportunity to revisit the fee structure around that, since right now, based on the maps we're seeing, we're kind of subsidizing keeping a lot of neighborhoods without vehicles on the streets. And so I just want to make sure that we're going to have an opportunity to look at that, too.
City Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Frances, that's a good question. I think it's a good policy question for the council to lay in on is that, you know, what is the equity between, you know, what is the equity between, you know, the different, various different rates? Today, we have a rate structure in the neighborhoods where we've concluded that the cost for the actual permit doesn't even cover the issuance of it. And so notwithstanding all the other supporting pieces, just the mere issuance. And so I think, you know, if council's inclined, as we come back with some of our fee schedules, that's a ripe area, I think, for some discussion in the future, even before we even delve into the question of, you know, entertaining changes to the structure of the program and questions about whether or not we want to allow for short-term, et cetera. I think pricing is probably, you know, maybe a sooner question that maybe the council wants to grapple with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shoresman.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that all up, because I think there was some public comment that sort of insinuated, and I sort of wondered myself in looking at the list of strategies in the plan, preferential parking districts is only two items at the very end, and it seems like there are lots of other elements around this issue that we would need to address. And so knowing that it would come back as a, you know, as a bigger item for a more robust discussion and with more variables that we might want to discuss in addition to, you know, just how the program is implemented, but also the cost and the cost recovery of the program. I'm glad that we'll get a chance to talk about that a little bit more. The one last thing that was brought up in some of our emails, I appreciate you bringing up the chaser tickets. It's sort of a weird name, but I basically equate it in my head to like a parking validation program where you go to a restaurant in some places and they can help you pay for your parking during that visit, that we do have that already, and that's something that businesses can participate in. And it was in, it was in the list of strategies. The other thing that was absent from the list of strategies is the free hour parking that we, as a council, decided to extend. Oh, was it in there? Oh, okay. So just, I know that that was some, that we did receive some comment about that and asking about the continuation of the free hour. And that was something that we did on a one-time basis with some funding that we had with ARPA funding. But just wanted to bring that up and see if the staff wanted to comment on the possibility of that going forward, or how that might look if it came forward again.
Yeah, so as Mayor Stewart mentioned, that's to the locals program. You know, we've tossed around the idea of what that looks like, who it's expanded to, who it supports, and what we're trying to get to downtown. We've come to understand that there's a focus on our local community that feels, you know, dissuaded from coming downtown. We're hoping that this locals program will incentivize them to participate in downtown activity. We don't have all the details worked out yet. I will have them by the time rate increases go into place in July. But we do think that there is a need to help subsidize their parking to encourage them to come downtown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Marx.
Yeah, another question I had, at present, we don't charge for Sunday mornings in the parking structure or in general. And I'm curious, I didn't find anywhere a suggestion that that be reexamined.
So currently, staff has not done an assessment on the revenue that could be generated between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM on Sunday mornings. We can take a look at that. It will take some fact-finding to identify the actual usage during that period of both on-street and off-street.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, because not everyone who worships worships on Sunday morning, just certain religions. And I think from an equity perspective, and also from a financial perspective, I'd much rather see us go toward that kind of direction rather than reducing the one-hour free in the parking structure. So that's my opinion, but thank you for that response.
Thank you. I think a good number of my questions have been asked by my colleagues, so I'll hopefully have less questions for you. On page 131, talking about the downtown slow presentation, number four says involve downtown slow representative in upcoming pricing feasibility study. So I'm guessing that means that that conversation has not been had with the parking committee already for downtown?
We have not worked towards a comprehensive assessment there. So we will engage our community partners when we move to it.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then the, I guess, I don't know, maybe for Walker, as far as the amount of people that responded for the survey, it seemed like a really small sampling. So I'm just curious, from other parking surveys you've done, what does that look like?
Well, it varies by community. I mean, in some communities, we do have more responses than others, we, not as many. But from our standpoint, we tried every method possible to get the word out. We did additional stakeholder engagements. We did additional surveys in December. We really tried to use social media, flyering, everything possible, calling friends to get them to, to get people to respond to the survey. So we used all the methods that the city traditionally has and still got 300, which is, you know, not too bad.
No, thank you. Yeah, I definitely tried to share it on social media as well and saw lots of attempts at engagement. So no, wasn't trying to say anything about what you did, just trying to understand as far as data comparatively to your other studies, what that looked like. And then, Vice Mayor, you mentioned about the electric vehicles, and that was a lot of my question as well. And I saw how rideshare was in here. Are you seeing like a rideshare fee that you would ask? I didn't notice anything about fees for rideshare.
So currently, no, we're not proposing a rideshare fee. We want to make sure that they're able to utilize curb space in a way that's safe for our community and not, you know, parking where they want to. The goal eventually would be to roll out programs that incentivize deliveries and other things at certain times of day to reduce downtown impacts and then encourage responsible behavior by our rideshare operators.
Okay, thank you. And then a couple places it said this, but for sure on page 145, as far as this plan should make it easier for drivers to find available parking. And is that really from just the garage sign that says, you know, 30 more spots available? Or are there more things about on-street parking as well?
So long-term goal would be a full overhaul of how we interface with our customer base. Structures are the easy target, the low-hanging fruit, as you would, where we can identify how many parking stalls are in those and encourage people to get to those spaces. We'll see that with the new parking structure that's going in, the Culture Arts District structure. We'll have wayfinding built into the lighting systems there that identifies open parking spaces. As we move forward, there's apps and other available products that you can utilize to identify on-street parking, too, that's available. So we'll pursue those and slowly start to roll this out to our customer base.
Okay, thank you. And then on page 154, looking at the EcoPass around Colorado, there was another point later on that says requiring businesses to offer something like that. And I don't think we could actually require a private entity to do that. Would it be more of an incentive to get a private entity to provide the transportation wallet or something similar, or the EcoPass?
Excuse me. Yes, it would be an incentive. Right now, so California recently passed a law where businesses with more than 50 employees have to provide the parking cash out, but that's only if they're providing paid parking for their employees. They have to provide an alternative if the employee does not choose the paid parking. But like in Boulder, those are incentive programs. But they're also, they work within a business improvement district and a parking district. So there's different fee structures that fund those programs and different opportunities for businesses to pay into them.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then there are a couple of things here, whether it's the, sorry, the parking PPP, the residential permits. The more and more that we go towards digital and technology, which is obviously awesome for so many reasons, also makes it somewhat difficult for someone who's not very digital or technical. And I'm thinking about someone that might want to use a short-term parking within a residential parking area, a district area, that is, you know, changing cars, borrowing cars. I mean, it's easy to pass, you know, pass here, here's take my pass, drive my car today. How do you do that if it's not their car and so the license doesn't necessarily connect?
So, thank you for the question. So a lot of the stuff we've heard is specifically around their friends visiting or a contractor coming over to do repairs. Licensed vehicles are allowed to, if you're, if you have a commercial license, you're allowed to be in a residential area without a permit. To launch the program and start virtual next fall, is our intent, we'll have a hybrid feature, no matter what, throughout the year. We'll have to assess how that actually looks with us rolling out both a physical and a digital permit associated with the vehicle, understanding that there's always going to be some limitations to what our customer base is able to participate in. We do have still the ability for people to come in and interface with our parking office like they currently do. We still take phone calls to issue permits for people that don't have access to a computer. We still have the front counter window. So we'll still offer all those programs the way it's been offered. We'll just have, add a layer of people being able to do it online or only enroll their vehicle. I do think personally that long-term, we'll have to consider what that hybrid feature looks like and how we continue it with some sort of physical hangtag permit. One of the major concerns we've heard from some of the residents is that their friends pop in and pop out, and it's not convenient for them to upload another vehicle. I'd say if you have a friend that's always visiting, please upload the vehicle. But I think that's where we'll always have some sort of hybrid feature to assist those customers that need that short-term visit for people they're not expecting.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing that I wasn't sure where it fit in, but we talked off and on about cameras. When we talk about our cost for increasing the garage and all that, does that have to do anything with the cameras, or would that come out of a different fund?
So long-term, that would be something that parking could fund. It's not in our financial modeling right now. For the next two years, there's something we'll have to work with city leadership on how all the elements get funded for that.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, those are all my initial questions, Vice Mayor Marx.
There we go. Thanks. I wonder if there was any thought being given to more park-and-ride kind of lots? I'm thinking specifically like anywhere near Cal Poly, maybe kind of by the Apple Farm in that direction. We just have one right now. So does the plan envision elsewhere that there could be park-and-ride lots?
So there are partnership opportunities with, within our community that we can investigate that with. We have already started discussions within staff to look at other areas where we can have rideshare in place with electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So those discussions are actively underway.
Okay, but it's not part of this plan, that's something that would come to us in a separate idea.
It does, it does call out for park-and-rides and...
More. One point, save point. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Got it, okay. No, I think it's a good idea, so thank you.
City manager, did you have a response earlier?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I want to give you just a little more detail on the question of incentives. And I think longer term, you know, and I've had some conversations with Councilmember P on this, is ultimately, we need to look at parking ratios throughout the city. And so I think there's a policy question for the council, looking both on the commercial residential side, is there incentives we want to provide in exchange for providing some sort of residential-based transportation wallet for commercial and/or residential? You've seen those in San Francisco. And so there's some examples where they've reduced the onsite or eliminated the onsite parking requirements in exchange for a recorded covenant that says in perpetuity, you'll provide a certain allowances, or there'll be credits that are bought for these transportation wallets. And so that is one mechanism that I think, you know, we should explore long-term, but that's really related to the zoning ordinance and to future development. And so as an incentive tool.
Awesome, thank you. I think those are all questions from my colleagues, so we'll move forward to public comment. City clerk?
We have two. Russell Mills and Martha Miller.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name's Russell Mills. I'm the Chair of your Active Transportation Committee, and I wanted to be here tonight to share a few perspectives of the committee regarding the plan. And first of all, I want to make clear that the committee supports the plan, which is good news, largely because it contains many active transportation components, and it contains other components that are not necessarily directly active transportation-related, but will have a secondary benefit to active transportation. For instance, continuing to promote use of the parking structure. Will cut down on circulation within the downtown of people driving around and looking for parking spots. That said, the committee also was very adamant about asking you to consider having a portion of the parking fees go towards active transportation projects. And it's not only to encourage mode shift, but also it's something very obvious. So most people choose to drive a car when they go downtown, and then they park and they get out of their car. And this amazing transformation takes place. They're no longer a motorist, they're now a pedestrian. And their perspective of the city absolutely changes at that point. Just think about what that must be like. And I'm sure you've all experienced it, too. So next time, think about it as that happens. So it just makes sense that as a result of parking downtown and paying, that they would also, at the same time, pay some small part of what it costs for the city to provide the kind of active transportation that they use. And so that's, that's an important consideration. And it is mentioned in the report, but it isn't addressed in the plan. And my understanding is that is something you will be considering later when you talk about fees. There is something in the plan that the, that the committee does take exception to, and that is the identification of bike share as a high priority. The Active Transportation Committee really only has two high priorities. One is to build out the Tier One network, and the other one is to address areas in the city where it's unsafe to either walk or ride a bike. So the committee had a very long discussion about bike share, do we support it, do we not? And it turns out the committee does support bike share, at least looking into it. But they also wanted three things as conditions to doing that. And one is that any bike share we undertake be successful. And that is one of the concerns, the primary concerns the committee has, that it may not work very well in San Luis Obispo. And secondly, and thirdly, really, they do not want a bike share to draw away money and time from the city. So our main objectives are, again, Tier One. So that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Martha Miller. I just wanted to state I do support allowing short-term, one- or two-hour parking within the residential parking districts during the daytime hours. There's 12 different residential parking districts throughout the city, and nine of those districts prohibit parking without a permit during all or a majority of the daytime hours. And that means that no one from the public can park within these parking spaces that are located in the public right-of-way and maintained by public tax dollars. And that's no one, whether you are dropping by simply to visit a friend who lives in the district, or you're parking across the street from Pacheco Elementary and trying to walk cupcakes into the classroom. It's absolutely not an attack on the neighborhood parking permit program. Allowing short-term parking without a permit during these daytime hours is consistent with neighborhood parking programs in numerous other cities. And it's also cited in the city's study on best practices. And it is a best practice because it balances what may be individual interests of the residents in the neighborhood with those of the wider community. So it continues to ensure parking availability for residents, but in a more efficient and equitable manner. It allows limited public use, and again, in the publicly maintained public right-of-way, while preventing non-residents from really parking and leaving vehicles. And that's really what causes the parking impacts and the parking problems. It allows those who live in the districts to also have visitors and guests drop by on a whim without having to park blocks away. So I know there's some conversation about maybe doing this, and the thought that enforcement of this would be complex and very difficult. And I want to really challenge that notion, because again, numerous other cities do this, including cities that were included in the city's study of best practice. in the city's study of best practices. So, I would encourage staff to reach out to those cities and figure out how it is being done and has been being done for a number of years. On Action Item 2D2, the commuter permits, this is actually the opposite of what I was suggesting, because this is to accommodate those who want to drive and park for extended periods of time. And that's what is actually causing the, causing the parking issues in the neighborhoods is when people leave their cars there. So, what I would suggest is that you make that, you revise 2D2 to make it a more general action plan to evaluate the neighborhood parking, preferential parking district program, and look at all the factors that you've discussed and pointed out tonight, including the cost of the permits, how you can enforce it, and ways of introducing some limited public, public access and use, again, of the public right-of-way maintained by public funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments?
No, there are none.
Okay. I know. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and move forward out of questions to deliberations unless there's any staff response to public comment.
Yes, I'll tackle the last speaker's comments. So, parking staff has tried to work towards solutions that are going to address some of these needs in preferential parking districts. We've previously tried solutions similar to this in the Dana Street area. It is a substantial cost to staff time to police that. Currently, we have one parking enforcement officer assigned daily to our preferential parking districts. This would have to increase for chalking and timing those vehicles. Additionally, some of the things I spoke about earlier with us expanding, the technology we use will help reduce some of the labor that has to go towards that, but we're not there yet, and we're making steps towards that.
Thank you so much. Councilmember P's?
Thank you so much. I'm really supportive of the plan, so I thank everyone for the effort to do this. I think there's a lot of creativity. It provides, and I have some written comments here that, because I just want to make sure that I cover. It provides a clear vision for integrating all of our mobility options in support of climate action, healthy community, a thriving downtown, a thriving community, thriving local economy citywide, and equitable access. There are just a lot of great points that point to equity, economic disparity types of considerations, so I'm really grateful for that effort. And I, then the focus on active transportation and transit options, I think is spot on. And I recognize that our non-car options need the concurrent and robust investment, right? So, we have the, these responses, some of them were kind of polarized about what's the priority, and I think that just reflects that people are overall supportive of having lots of options, but if there aren't good options, then it's very frustrating. And so, so I think it's really important that the, this access and parking management plan be integrated with our goals and that just we as a council and as a community recognize the ongoing investment, not just in ATC, but I think those, or the ATP, but in our transit as well, frequency, et cetera. And, you know, EV parking, is, or EV cars, I think is a really important part of our solution, but to me, ultimately, cars in general, it's a land use issue, right? Storing cars takes up a lot of space and it really limits what we can do within our urban boundary, right? If we're trying to have the kind of residential development and density that we want, then whether it's EV or not, cars just take up a lot of space. So, I think we need to be, for those who need cars, absolutely, we want to go for those lower emissions, and I, I think it is, that we need to kind of keep the drumbeat and we want less driving. And honestly, I get it in terms of, again, some people need cars, and it can be really liberating for folks who are older or differently able to not need a car at all, right? So, that's what I mean, that we just have this concurrent success of all of our mobility options. It's awesome that we are aligning that way. The preferential permits, I'm super interested in, in taking a look at those, and soon, they'll require a whole level of analysis for cost and process and location, but we're moving in the right direction. Again, this plan lays out kind of a priority and objective and details to work out, but I'm really grateful that we're taking those steps. And then the last kind of just bigger picture item that, thank you to Mr. Horn for stating upfront, this is not a conversation about the cost. But again, it, it is timely because when, when we adopted the new fee structures, the increase in the parking rates, there was a certain amount of like, this is a bit of a placeholder when we're considering that item at council because the, we need to get the financing for the parking structure, right? And so, we said, okay, well, this is, this is a model we know will work, this is how we can secure our financing to be able to have an income that will, you know, justify the cost of the structure. It's like, okay. And yet, we kind of said, okay, well, and then once this access, parking and access study comes in, we'll be able to kind of rethink that. So, I think we're, we're there, and I just, I, I feel like we're still, we're talking a lot of integration and we're still stuck in a silo. And I think that we're seeing that those silos aren't really working for us anymore. So, the parking structure, one of our main impetus for me was that we want to support arts and culture and the slow rep theater, and that really does need a parking structure to be able to be a regional theater. So, then there starts to be some different nexus, right? We talked about we were able to do that first hour free for longer because of ARPA and the economic contribution that the parking fund was able to make. So, I'm just thinking like, are we, can we throw this open a little bit bigger in terms of, of those particular cost increases? Are, are those out of line? Will they be detrimental? Is there more nexus with some other ARPA funds that haven't necessarily been strictly allocated? Is there a nexus with INLU fees, DOT, longer loan repayment kinds of programs, and just the economic drive brought from that arts and culture, the museums and the theater? So, that, so that we're not giving all of that burden, you know? We're wanting the ATC is requesting that the parking help be able to cover that. Well, yes, that makes sense, but then we don't have enough money to cover the structure, right? So, I'm just thinking that our enterprise funds, the silos of transit and parking and, and then, you know, public works, this is other thing, is that it just may not be serving us well anymore. So, so I guess that's a general laying the, starting a conversation that we will need to continue as we look at the, the parking fees and having some creativity so that maybe our community won't be as stressed out on those rate increases and we can maybe be a little bit more incremental, because there's a lot of hours where we're not anywhere close to that 85%, and yet they're still going to be paying $4 an hour for parking on a Tuesday morning. So, those are, those are my thoughts so far, but no changes to the, to the plan itself. I'm fully supportive of the, of the document, and, and I am in support of some kind of local incentive or more broadly, a way to improve affordability as we transition to this more robust multimodal approach. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman P's. Vice Mayor Marks?
Thank you. Well, I want to say this is a really incredible study that you guys have done. I really appreciate the deep dive into, and it is an incredibly complex area, which I'm always eager to learn more about. And I think the, the thoroughness of the study also shows that the fact that it wasn't really super controversial tonight, I was surprised. I thought we would have a lot more public comment and people having strong opinions. So, I just wanted to make some specific observations, basically in favor of, of the plan as presented. I think switching the downtown parking permits to the daily parking permits is a good idea, especially if it doesn't actually cost the employees anymore, but it gives them options, ways of saving money. It's good. I am concerned about the idea of reducing subsidized parking for the city of San Luis Obispo employees in that a number of employees work in areas that are not close to City Hall, like the Corp Yard, for instance, and various other locations, and I'm thinking the Police Department, for instance, where a large part of their job is hopping in a car and doing something, working with an emergency or like that. Maybe they have to come and go many times, and I don't want to be in a situation where we're creating an extra burden on our, on our employees. And I, as a city council member who has a reserved space here in the parking lot, it's, it's really important because we're coming and going all the time. And so, to know that we can, especially those of us who have other jobs, have day jobs besides this job, knowing that you can zip in, go to a meeting, come back, and not have to be in a situation where you're scheduling extra time to find a parking spot, it's really important. And I also don't, just don't know in terms of the labor implications of, of reducing the parking accessibility of our employees, it's something that I'm, I'm concerned about that. I think it'd have to be handled very carefully. Now, I think the parking and LOFEE program should, the parking and LOFEE is one place where we could really look at, and we'll talk about it later with fees, but increasing that, that program might really make sense in terms of helping our parking fund. I'm very protective of the parking fund. I don't want to see a part of it siphoned off for ATP. We've already got the, we've already got the modal shift reflected in the 20% of the road budget that goes toward alternate transportation, and I think that that's already a lot taken out of roads. Roads are also important. It's, the emphasis on information and communication is wonderful, but I do want to agree with Mayor Stewart that there are a lot of our residents who are permanent residents, long-term residents, who may not even have cell phones, who may not, they probably might have a computer, but they might not do social media. So, there's a huge gap of who is going to reach, be reached by electronic communication. And I don't, I, I think it's really important to not feel like the job is finished when you've put something on Facebook, so. I wanted to also, I think it's good to continue to reduce the number of 10-hour meter spaces, but going along with Councilmember Shoresman, making sure that that location is appropriate and, you know, close to places that are kind of attracting traffic. Also, if we're going to go to two-hour parking spaces, there has been a complaint, and I'm not sure how, how current this is, that if you are in a two-hour spot and you pay for it, and then, oh my gosh, I'm going to need another half an hour, that you can't extend that two hours to be three hours or four hours, or like that, without having run out and move your car. Yeah. The value of the parking meters where you have to put your quarters in, which I hate, I have to say, I was always looking for quarters, is that you can run to the parking meter and put some more money in, and then go back and finish shopping or whatever it is you're doing. So, I would, I would be, I'm in favor of the two hours in general, but my question is how rigid is that, you know? Can we build in some kind of flexibility? I think we should charge for Sunday mornings. I would like staff to look into that so that it's equitable, and also so that it brings in more money. A little practical idea that one of the, someone emailed me is that if we could paint arrows on the curb that indicate where these pay, parking pay kiosks are located, so that when you get out of the car, you're looking like, okay, how do I pay for this? You know, if there were, you know, just a few little arrows, like it's over there, I think that might, that might be helpful. And I do, I do want to say that I've noticed a safety concern, and that I just want to mention it, and I'm not sure if it, exactly how that would fit in, but of drivers getting out of cars that are parked in spaces that are not next to the curb, but next to the bike, the protected bike path that is next to the curb. So, they open their door and they get out, and the other day I was driving on Higera, this elderly gentleman tripped and sort of fell, and he was right in my, right in front of me. And luckily, there was nobody in back of me, so I was able to brake and like that. But I think there is a safety factor for that transformational moment that Mr. Mills talked about, when somebody stops being a driver and starts being a pedestrian. You know, I've also seen people who have walkers in their car kind of struggling to open that passenger door and get that walker out, and then because of the, the way that it's structured, there's a curb there, they can't go immediately to the sidewalk. They have to walk along a line of parked cars very close to traffic in order to find a brake so that they can take their walker and get to that sidewalk. So, I just think when that design of these, you know, we want to protect the bicycle riders for sure, but also want to make sure that we're not creating unsafe conditions for people who are parking in, in situations where the road is continually narrow, being narrowed. So, I'm going to stop right here, but I do think this, this is a very well-done report, and I thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Shoresman.
Yes, thank you. I just want to go back and say thank you to everybody that worked on this report one more time. It's very clear that it took a lot of energy, a lot of work. You spent a very obvious amount, a large amount of effort trying to do that public outreach that we're always asking you to do. Yes, I appreciate that the survey itself maybe didn't have as many respondents as we would have liked, but you did stakeholder interviews and you did outreach to various groups, both that often have a voice and those who do not. You, I think, really did the best job you could at trying to get as much feedback, and if you didn't get it the first time, then you went back again, and then you went back again. So, I really appreciate all that effort. I also appreciate the reminder that was given at the beginning that this is not a fee study. This is a conceptual framework. This is not probably the last time that we're going to see many of these items, so I, I'm not going to kind of pick apart many of the strategies. You know, I think that they are general parameters that will give us, that will remember a year from now what we were trying to do with that, and we'll continue to, to refine and get more detail about what we want them to actually entail. And also want to bring up the fact that I know, you know, we talked about this back when we had the discussion about parking rates, and we decided to, to raise some of the parking rates. And one of, some of the things that we asked for during that discussion were other options for pricing, things like surge pricing, demand pricing, tiered pricing, and this plan gives us, gives us strategies to talk about that. And this plan gives us, gives us strategies to talk about that. We also talked about ways to consider options that would help retail and other frontline employees, you know, continue to be able to afford to park, and you've addressed that as well. We're not, we're not looking to increase those monthly and quarterly parking fees right now, but it's something that we'll look at in the future. We also asked for options to improve accessibility for those who can't walk from structures and to increase, increase turnover time at curb spaces, and you've given us strategies for that. So in my mind, you checked all the boxes of the things that we asked for months ago, and so I really appreciate that. The biggest piece, and I mentioned this before, I think, that I'm happy to see in here is the focus on communication of all of these strategies. We've talked many times, Gavin and I have talked about some of the things that my fellow council members have brought up, you know, how difficult it is to figure out the parking kiosks and the transition to the gateless, gateless parking structure situation and how confusing that is to people. And which credit card can I pay for and where, you know, where do I pay? So I think the wayfinding and the communication to the public on all these strategies as we implement them is huge. Yes, to the locals incentive, you asked for specific guidance from the council on that, and so I think that we need to keep finding the best option to make it so that our local residents do want to keep coming downtown, and especially if they're just going to be dropping things off and picking things up. That's the comment that I think we've heard about the most, is that people are concerned that it's just going to be too cumbersome to come to their favorite downtown business and pick up a cake or drop off their dry cleaning or whatever. The focus on equity, I think, is huge. I appreciate that's kind of woven into everything. I heard Councilmember Marx's, or Vice Mayor Marx, sorry, Vice Mayor Marx's comments about, you know, it's important to remember that not everybody can walk from the parking structure. I think, in my opinion, creating all of these different other programs and ways to make it easier to walk, bike, and take transit downtown makes it easier for those who can't use those options to have parking accessible to them when they need it. If there are fewer people who could use those other modes to get downtown, then that frees up parking spaces for those who can't, and curb space for those who have accessibility issues. I also think that offering more options for people to bike and ride and use public transit is an equity issue. A lot of people can't afford to own a car. Cars are expensive. Whether they're electric or gas, they're still expensive, and it's much cheaper to own a bike or a pair of shoes to walk around. So I think that those, that all of this is tied into equity. Last, just a couple of comments on, on some of the comments that we received. I agree with the representatives from the, from the ATC, and I mentioned this during our goal-setting process, in terms of active transportation and our capital improvement projects, building out our Tier One network, in my opinion, is much more important than bike share, although I do think that it's important for us to keep looking at bike And in terms of using funds from parking to support things other than parking, I'm open to that idea, if it will help us, you know, further that, those mode shift goals. I think I, I kind of agree with what Councilmember Pease for. Maybe some of our systems for, for utilizing these funds, these siloed systems could be flexed a little bit in some cases. But I do know that we have a big expense coming up in terms of the parking structure. So I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't have a firm idea on the top of my head right this moment of how we rectify all that, but, but I see the value in having the opportunity to use those funds more fluidly. And last but not least, I know we've talked about parking districts more than we probably thought we were going to tonight, but I would like to understand the difference between what the person from, that talked about item 2D2, what she was hoping that would look like and what it does look like. I don't, I don't think that I'm, and have enough expertise in, in parking or planning to understand the difference between what she was saying and what's here. But I am glad that we'll have an opportunity to look at that more thoroughly as we look at preferential parking districts in the future. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much. And I think just really briefly, after meeting with the public commenter, there's the short-term parking within the district that you actually are kind of getting a electronic permit for, for, you know, that time period, like you would downtown. But instead, just saying you would chalk it instead and just go ahead and not have to get a permit, go park, like Spacheco, drop off your cupcakes, kind of example she gave, you don't have to go get another permit for parking within a parking district. That was the, still kind of confusing to say, but. And before we go to Councilmember Francis, City Manager, would you like to share about the, kind of the loan concept? Because we talked about this earlier in my agenda review as well, around the different siloed aspects Councilmember Pease brought up, and how do we maybe borrow or make it work?
Yeah, so we've got a couple of things underway. As you know, the Public Works Department is in the process right now of looking at, how do we bridge these different areas between transportation, well, active transportation, parking, and transit? And so we'll be soon going out and hiring a position that will be unifying those positions. Longer term, let me just make sure I'm answering the right question, so maybe you could ask me the question so I got it right.
I think you just did it just there.
Yeah, so that's, okay, just want to make sure I'm answering the right question. Yeah, so that's longer term, and we've got to do that. We've, we've seen, many of you had a chance to listen in on Build a Better Slow. They had a presenter last, oh gosh, in the fall timeframe, and we were hoping to go visit her, the NACCO conference coming up here in the spring, because Boulder's doing an outstanding job of bridging those different pieces. You know, I think one of the aspects I've heard, taken away from the conversation tonight is we want parking to do a lot, right? We want parking to build these structures. We want to potentially fund active transportation programs. We want to fund transit. And then we also want to hold rates, right? And then there's concerns about rates. And I just, you know, so a little bit of a reality check that, you know, we've got to make all of that math work. So one of the items, I think, you know, I looked for a consultant, is probably in the loading order of one of the first conversations we need to have, is probably bring back some rate studies and have a rate conversation with the council because, and then do some of that modeling because, so that we can set some expectations about what we're able to afford. And I'm probably driving in front of my headlights, sorry to use the parking, driving pun in a parking meeting, but does that sound accurate?
Yeah, I think very accurate. Parking is such a valuable asset, and it also takes up so much space that many cities want it to do everything. But it often comes down to, how are you going to price it? How are you going to maximize that value? So we really need to look at, what are the right fee structures? What is the affordability within those fee structures, and how does that work within the larger system of mobility and land use?
You know, I had a chance, was about 10 days ago, to have some email exchange with the godfather guru of parking, Donald Schu. And so he, many of you know, he did some work here at San Luis Obispo, so I was flattered that he responded to our emails. And, you know, he, he's got some ideas around parking and has spent some time. He was so flattered with his experience. He's come back several times with his family. And I think that there's some conversations we need to have with downtown slow in the future. You know, Santa Barbara's often talked about, about their first 75 minutes, and I, you know, always point out that, you know, they've got a funding mechanism by which to fund their downtown free. I think they pay the city currently today about $1.4 million a year. It's ironic, looking at their number of parking spaces that we have in San Luis Obispo, it's about the same that Santa Barbara has. It's about 3,000 between their lots and parking structures. And so that'll have to be a conversation we're going to need to have in the future, along with kind of dynamic pricing and congestion-based pricing. You know, I know that's something that's very important to downtown slow in my conversations with Matina, and so if that sounds like something, we will certainly put that in the work program that comes back to the city council.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thank you for some of the clarification, and I never thought I'd be so excited to read a parking plan. It was really quite exciting to see, especially the integration focus with the active transportation plan. It just felt so fresh and like we were doing something really big and important. So that was great. And I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Shoresman for her comments about the lens of equity on a lot of the stuff that was done. I really appreciated that. I, in general, just super excited about the plan and hoping that we keep a focus on some of the little issues around the edges, particularly ADA access. And I know we doubled the number of spots, but really making sure, are we serving the people in the places they need to be served and providing the access that actually needs to be provided to folks with accessibility issues? And then kind of coming back around to what Councilmember Pease was talking about earlier, and then Shoresman too, with making sure that we're, we're really matching the other mobility options. Almost everything in here was talking about getting folks to use these other modes of transportation, and we just aren't there yet, particularly with bringing in the shuttle options and making sure that we are providing other ways for folks to get around as we start to shift them out of being able to drive downtown. You know, and I know there's been a lot of comments about providing EV plugins downtown, and I think that's really important with the electric vehicles. But I also just want to make sure that we're super clear-eyed about the impact of electric vehicles with the manufacturer and disposal of them. They're not what's going to solve our greenhouse gas emissions. There's a huge impact, even more than, I've got a little figure here, even more than gasoline and diesel vehicles goes into manufacturing electric vehicles. And they're better, but they're not a lot better. Really want to make sure that we're also revisiting the PPP zones. You know, we've kind of hashed over all that, so I don't think we need to go into it today, but just a reiteration, let's make sure we revisit that. And also want to make sure we're providing sufficient safe bike parking. As somebody who has shifted just in the last two years to almost exclusively biking downtown, I'm constantly finding myself worried about where I'm going to park and is it secure? And finding a place to put my giant cargo bike, and so really making sure that we're providing for that mode switch that we want people to do. Also really excited, as everybody else has already said, about the focus on education and outreach. You know, I learned a lot reading this plan about what programs we already have in place, and, you know, I think that there's, there's a lot we can do, and I know y'all acknowledged that there's some things that just haven't been communicated out to the public yet, and I think that's going to make a really big difference in getting people to make those different decisions. And yeah, the second piece with the locals incentive, I'm really hugely in favor of that. You know, oftentimes when I do drive downtown, it is just to, because I've got a load of something, got to pop in really quickly, and so that is, I think that's a huge thing for a lot of folks, just being able to make those quick errands. And being able to make that a less expensive and easier option is great. So thank you all again for everything you did today.
Well, thank you so much, and, boy, I've got a lot of notes, but I will try not to put them all out here. You're all wrapped up, ready to go. Truly, I am grateful for all of this work, and, and I appreciate where we're going. I, I hear long-term on some of these things, but this is a five-year plan, so it's not actually long, long-term, if you really think about the whole thing. So I'm, I'm kind of a little challenged by some of our extreme stretch goals, but I appreciate the concepts. I very much also appreciated City Manager sharing with the loan ideas, because I really was looking at, how do we, how do we take the money from here to here to here and be able to get it done? I feel like really, truly, in the last probably six months, we've been looking at some amazing plans for our city, and they're like giant puzzles that, or we have this giant puzzle of our city, and they're giant puzzle pieces. And we're not really able to look at the entire picture at once. So to me, to look at this without the transit plan doesn't make sense. I feel like we're putting pieces together that we don't even know if we're going to be like round or like the little person shape of the puzzle piece. And then, you know, it's kind of like doing the in-house, sorry, inclusionary housing ordinance without the missing middle work housing. It just, it's, it feels very off. And so I know at the same time, though, we have to keep doing plans to be able to keep moving forward. And I know this is a framework, but in our resolution, it talks about accepting this plan as well as the implementation of the locals first. And so in the, in the title of it and in section 1E, I personally would like to take out the implementation aspect, because that's the only thing here that's not coming back to us. As far as we talk about work plan and things coming back to us, that wouldn't be coming back to us. So there's a balance of policymaking versus micromanagement, and I fully understand that. But I think there's also wanting to understand how it's going to roll out is very important to me, and how it's going to affect our community members is very important to me. I appreciate the amount of outreach and engagement that was done, and I hear you. I mean, it's really hard, and there's so many things we're asking for engagement on. And I'd like to really have a better understanding of who was missing. I've, I've found many times when we do our engagement, it's hard to get, you know, people who are living in low-income housing or working two or three jobs. But can we get involved with UDW or our hotels and hospitality partners and really get connected with some people who are working some of those minimum wage jobs and really get their input? I think that's, that's some of the aspects we're missing in this conversation, especially when we're talking about someone who is making minimum wage, working downtown, doesn't get out till midnight from their job or 10 o'clock. There's no bus at that point. They're not biking home till wherever they're biking home to. And what is this, what are these rates due to them? What does this garage base do to them? So I think we have to, like, look at that. I'm very thankful for the demand pricing, surge, surge pricing concept. I think the tier pricing, you know, we've looked at all different ones in the plan. I love that. So thank you for looking at that. And I am a little bit confused as well around the 10-hour parking, but I hear what you say as far as long-term. But again, we're talking about five years. Is that long-term enough to move 10-hour parking to two-hour parking, especially when some of that is a person that is working in a residential area, not necessarily in their own home, this is kind of, that allows them to be able to park there. So I, I don't know, I'm just not sure how that works. I love the idea about getting a baseline for the residential permits, because I think it's really, or districts, I think that's really important. And the walking from the parking structures, whether it's the trolley or some sort of smaller shuttles, I don't know what that looks like in the long-term. We've talked about this for a while. But whether it's someone who has some shore footing challenges, whether it's for age or for other abilities, you know, are some of our structures are on steep inclines? You know, how do they get from the structure they're trying to go to, to the store they're trying to go to? If they don't happen to have the blue placard, what do they do? We already talked about the virtual permits, but I think that if we have the option for them to go into the parking office and still get a paper one or a plastic one, whatever that looks like, that would be fine. Sunday mornings is a great way to look at, you know, one more way of kind of sharing the equity of how people worship, and at the same time, maybe potentially adding revenue to the parking. And I would say that's also another thing to look at. Well, when we talk about locals first for this one hour, is that locals being in the actual city, you live in the city, or is it you live in the county? Because I think that that's, if people are coming to get their, their county and court paperwork, or whether they're coming to worship, I mean, there's all sorts of things, and I wonder, how do we make that work and still be able to come and get their stuff done? So I just think that one hour free is still, in my mind, something that is concerning to me if we're limiting people in our county. And, one second. Oh, yes, and very much, I've had so many conversations about what you mentioned, Vice Mayor, the arrows or signage in some way that is closer intervals of space to help people know where to get to the pay stations or whatever pay kiosks will look like in the future, or parking garages even to get to there. This is why we have so many coffee shops and why you see so many star we have so many coffee shops and why you see so many Starbucks in one little area is because people don't look past the one or two blocks they're at. So when you look up, you can't see the parking. There you go. It's, you don't know what to do. And especially when you're in a newer town that you don't know what to do, I think the signage part is a challenge. And I know we talked about earlier, there are a lot of signs now. We went from little signs to a lot of signs, but it still doesn't help in the frequency of where you park to where you're getting to. Now we have a lot of signs at the kiosk, but if you don't know where the kiosk is, that still is challenging. I know with the kiosk, we can still use paper and coins versus just our phone or our credit card. And I hope that we will be able to keep that for a long time. Because I know some people do not have bank cards or credit cards, and they will not do it for so many different reasons that I won't go there. But, so I think that's all of my many, many questions. I really look forward to you being involved with, again, the Downtown Slow Parking Committee and Board, our local education, whether it's K through 12, or Cuesta and Cal Poly, and look forward to the engagement going forward. So if the implementation part is taken out of section 1E and the title, I am totally happy to support this plan. If it is left in, I am not. So there you go.
I just want to be clear, what that would mean is you would, is what you're asking for, Mayor, is for us to bring back number two back to the City Council beforehand?
Yes, just like you would with the rest of the items in this framework, the skeleton.
We'll just need to, I just want to prepare you. So what's the expectations for outreach, engagement, for hearing, staff report?
I just want to see what it looks like.
Because we're marching towards, we've got July 1, and we've got, that's when your funding, and just to be clear, your ARPA funding only covered about half of the amount of lost revenue for providing that first hour free. So we've got to solve this issue for, you know, we're literally in the middle of bank discussions right now to try to get financing for this parking structure. And so if we want to make it by July 1, and we have enough time to roll out a program, then Gavin, I need to ask you and Matt, when would we need to bring this program back to the City Council? And if you can tell me that that's not doable, and there'll be a lag, then we just ought to just tell the Council tonight that.
And to me, I just want to be clear, I'm looking for a consent item. I just want to see what it looks like. Because we had the rollout of parking kiosks, and I know there were many, many reasons why. But I want to be able to say, for the community to say, oh, I get what that's going to be like. And that's, that's all I need.
Thanks for saying. If it's just a consent item, if there's not, if we can develop the plan and move it forward, I think it's doable prior to July 1. If we need to put more effort in that, then we really don't have the resources. You know, right now, my mantra has been storm recovery, core services, and then major city goals. And this kind of is in a weird place where I really, really want to get it done, but I really, really, really need to do the storm recovery. So we can do a consent item if it's, if you're willing to accept the, an outline of what we plan to do.
Yeah, I just like to see that outline. I don't need the engagement and the whole thing. Because we've offered people engagement so many ways, and people chose not to get involved. And so I just think that that understanding of what that's going to look like is important.
Sure. And consent items is Public Works' bread and butter, and so we're happy to do that for you.
So Matt, just to understand, when would we need to have that council action to implement by July 1? I just want that enough time. So if the council says they pull it off consent, now we need to adjust it. And then we need to come back again if there's any changes to the program.
Could we include that information in the consent item that we put forward? This is our plan. This is our timeline. If this gets pulled or changed.
And the fallback position would be the council could pull another, it could pull a million and a half dollars out of the infrastructure investment fund to do it for another year if you decide that that's what you want to do. But we're just, we frame it in this way because there's a short timeframe. And so understanding that the council wants to have its fingerprints on it, absolutely. We just want to advise you of the tight timetable. And if we don't hit that timetable, we're going to have to explore financial alternatives.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. And we would like to be able to offer you the ramifications of pulling one and a half out of the infrastructure investment fund prior to that implementation as well.
Thank you. And I love, I love seeing the trade offs, genuinely. Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman?
Yeah, it's okay. There you go.
There we go. So I'm sorry, but I need you to back up. And I was trying to figure out when you were talking about it, what exactly are you proposing bringing back for consent?
The locals. If you look at the resolution at the end, I'm, it's like 462 or something. Hold, let me get there. 462. Maybe 463. One second here. 465 in resolution, it says, adopting the access and parking management plan and authorizing the Public Works Director or their designated to approve the development and implementation of a local incentive parking program that provides a limited continuation of the first hour free. That says that in the title, and then again in section 1E down below. And by adopting this entire plan, great. Approving the development of the local incentive parking program, great. I would like to see it come back to us before the implementation. Everything else in this plan, we've said is going to come back to us to look at in work plans or in some other fashion. But this is the one that will say, here we go. Do it.
So you're just wanting that piece E to come back so that we can see what the local incentive parking program looks like? Got it. Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep. City Manager Johnson?
While we've got the council here tonight, is there anything that you want to tell us? So for example, would you like it to be countywide? Would you like it to be city? Is there anything particular that you have expectations about this program so that we're not throwing darts into the dark? So is there, if there's some, if there's some areas to help us reduce the guesswork, that would be helpful. Because I understood the program to be fairly straightforward. And let me see if I get this right. It's a countywide program where individuals would register their license plate, and they would have a limited number of times on an annualized basis to be able to use that program. And I don't know if you have a number in mind, Gavin. And once you register your license plate, you get so many times free in the parking structures for an hour. Is that the extent of it?
Pretty much. So the basic program we're floating right now is a program like City Manager Johnson mentioned, or the equivalent to register your vehicle through the LPR system that we're putting into our gateless operation, where you'd be afforded the first hour, the structure's still free. That's working with the virtual permits we're developing with our vendor currently. So that's another option for anyone that would register with the program. It does require people to register with us, either virtually or coming into our parking office and seeing our staff to purchase a permit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Marks?
Yeah. Well, the fee structure that we're talking about, a study and all that stuff, that's going to come after the time, the short time deadline. But I'm wondering if there would be some interim raises that we could do that would, like for instance, the Sunday morning parking, which I'm parking on, that would address that half a million dollar shortfall that we're looking at. It costs about half, I want to make sure I understand this. It costs about half a million dollars for that one hour free in the structures. And this is a problem in terms of our securing the loan that we need to build the next parking structure. Is that correct? So is there a way we can come up on a short and a stopgap measure to come up with that half a million dollars?
So the first hour free currently, current rates is about $700,000.
Seven hundred.
With the rate increases planned for next year, it's going to be about $1.4 million is the difference we have to cover. So that's our goal with the change or reduction of the first hour. We don't know what revenue would be generated from a locals benefit program, but we know it will have some impact on that. We could look at some other program increases to other long-term parking programs. We specifically avoided those because the programs we currently offer would disenfranchise our local employees. So we didn't want to do that. And that was our goal behind freezing the other long-term parking rates. You know, it's been floated about increasing preferential parking district rates. There's just not enough people to participate in those with doing a nominal increase that would cover that difference for us. So we can go back and look. But right now, it's, you know, there's a lot of different programs where we don't have data on, on the number of people that participate in, in certain things.
So if we went to 45 minutes rather than an hour, would that reduce the potential shortfall by, well, like $400,000 or something like that? I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I feel like we're being somewhat painted in a corner in a certain way. Not, not that it's, not that it's deliberate at all, but we're all operating within these constraints.
So.
And, you know, basically what we're talking about is people who are going to return books to the library, or, you know, it's, it's that kind of short term, you know, need. So I'm just curious, and this is a question, is there any, is there any way we can increase the revenue in a way that, that would be legal, that would be possible without taking it from the general fund or eliminate?
So I'll let Gavin answer the question on 45 minutes and whether that's a good time or not. I think 75 minutes is a standard, you know, time for people to run different errands. Sometimes you park, go to do certain things. That's why that time is, you know, you see that consistently in a lot of other parking districts. But I'll ask Gavin and others to speak to that. In terms of revenue offsets, and we did recall, Gavin, correct me, we looked at Sunday morning. It was nominal. It was in the tens of thousands of dollars because there's not a lot of demand. It's early Sunday morning. So adding that timeframe was, I think, less than $100,000. So you still have like $1.3 million to make up. Gavin, could you remind the council to, to get a million dollars more in revenue? What does it take in terms of rates in the structures around the streets?
So, that's a lot of questions.
It is a lot of questions, but it's a real question that I want everyone to understand.
And include surge pricing and.
Well, I think that, you know, those are great questions, but I think, but we can't solve for that until we do the study, you know. And so we're trying, so hence why we offered this program as a, as a means, what we thought was a smart recommendation, to help us bridge to when we have the full study on surge pricing and dynamic pricing, so that it buys us some more time. And then we have a better understanding. Well, what do we believe that these programs might do in terms of additional yield, understanding that every market, as I understand it, is different. At least talk, you know, reading Donald Schub's literature, it varies from town to town because humans are involved and there's cars. And they drive and they park in different places based upon those patterns and those cultural norms. So you don't really know until you actually roll it out. And so, you know, it's, part of it is going to be adopt and then implement, monitor and adjust, you know. And I think, you know, that strategy has proved itself time and time again. But I'll let Gavin answer those two loaded questions on what it would take to get to 1.3 million in terms of rates. And then second, you know, how, what would 45 minutes do?
So, so I will stress that any parking program that we increase is going to reduce the number of people that participate in it. So there's natural attrition there that happens. The higher our rate goes, the harder it is to predict how many people are actually going to leave a parking program. You know, we've taken a look at this. The on-street and off-street rates were the ones that we knew could be sacrificed in some, some degree. I would say with the parking program, in where you have a gated facility, there's always a grace period, understanding that people don't get charged for second one after they enter the parking structure. So there'll always be some sort of grace period that remains in the structure. What that winds up looking like, we're not sure. Most of our customer base for off-street are in the parking structure for about an hour and 30 minutes. On-street, they're there for about an hour and 15 or so. So we understand that, you know, the customer base is quickly turning over for both facilities. We want to maximize the revenue that comes from that. To put a dollar value and a time limit for on-street that would make that, it's a little difficult to get to. Us changing the free hour or the free hour offering to something less, I don't think it gets us to the goal that we're going to want. I honestly believe that us having a locals program that's incentive for anyone that lives within our county is going to meet the goals of what the one hour free was intended for. That was specifically designed to encourage local people that were aware of the program to come down and prosper from that with our local businesses. The program was never intended for tourists that are coming to town to, to take advantage of that. It's not something that we actively advertise in any of our stuff.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, anything else?
Oh, thanks. Well, what if we just said for number two, to approve the development of a local, local incentive parking program? And ace out the implementation, and then just when you've got the program more gelled, then you come back to us. So you can go ahead and develop it. It'll probably be fine. But I have to agree with our mayor that it would be something that, it would be wonderful if the county, if this council and the public had a chance to comment on it. So would that work?
I just want to be clear, when you say comment and consider, is that consent or is that a hearing item?
In my world, it's consent.
I just want, I just want to be clear. All right. Thank you.
On a consent, yeah.
Councilmember Francis?
To make a motion.
Councilmember Shoresman, did you have something else?
Yeah. So the reason that, the reason that this is in the resolution the way it is, is because of the time sensitivity of implementing this right on top of the end of the free, the free hour that we've already, yeah, I, so, sorry. So are we at removing this item? Or where, what's the, maybe I should just let you make the motion and understand what, where things are at. I'm a little confused where things are at still.
So my understanding, and I actually could go two ways on this. I know we just got a description of what the program would likely be, with the exception of just not having the number of days that would be inclusive in that. Is that, so the only thing that we're waiting on is how many days would people get?
Correct. I think that's the missing element. It's countywide, and it would be for countywide residents needed to register their vehicles. It would be for a limited number of times downtown in the parking structures, not on the streets, in the parking structures. Is there any other elements that we need to be thinking through? I think that's, that's the gist of it.
We've intentionally tried to write this to be the same benefit that is currently out there.
Right.
For the community.
But just with registration.
Yes.
So then my understanding of where we are right now is that we want to move to adopt a draft resolution entitled the resolution of the City Council of San Luis Obispo, California, adopting access and parking management plan. And we want to authorize the Public Works Director or their designated to approve the development of a locals initiative parking program that provides a limited continuation of the first hour free or similar benefit parking structures. And we would like to see the consent, consent agenda before the implementation begins. Is that acceptable?
For me, yes. Councilmember Shoresman?
Yeah, okay. I understand now. Thank you for clarifying that. And so the one last question about it is, your estimation of the price of that is, or did you already, you don't know that? That was what you were trying to do earlier and couldn't get, quite get there?
We don't know the number of people that will wind up participating in a program like that.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that last final clarification, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Just before we, and, but Councilmember Pease, are you, do you have any other questions or any other comments before we move forward? Okay. Okay, great. So can we have a roll call, please?
Have to hit another button.
Yes.
Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much for all of your time and all of your work. We really, really appreciate it. And we'll move forward to the liaison reports and communications. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before you do that, do you want to revisit your minute item regarding the wording on? Madam Mayor, before you do that, do you want to revisit your minute item regarding the wording on the?
Yes, I would love to do that. Thank you for the reminder. So council, I'm sorry, item five B.
So we've put together a slide with some marked up language. Thanks Teresa for doing that. So up top you have basically the language that Councilmember Pease had proposed. And so you can see the strict language. Sorry, it's getting late. And so it's just to add, collaborate, to strike collaboration and to implement comprehensive effective strategies to prevent and reduce homelessness and chronic homelessness. Down below, it's the same language and did, but it adds for, to implement comprehensive and effective strategies. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. They got reversed somehow and up here. Up top, we've added the language, third sentence down, funding in programs for all parties. So referencing nonprofit partners, non-government agencies, county, the state and federal governments to collaborate and to implement. So that's the only, that's the difference between the top version and the bottom version.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease, how do you feel about that? Okay, she gives a thumbs up. All right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think that does it.
Okay, great.
I mean, either one, if, if the top one, because you had concerns with the bottom one, that was my kind of simple fix. But if that top one, that works for me also.
Okay, top one works for me as well. So can we get a motion?
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
And maybe I missed this during the goal setting and sorry to wordsmith even further. But is there a reason that we have said to reduce homelessness and chronic homelessness? Isn't chronic homelessness included within the larger category of homelessness in general?
Yeah, I think it was to prevent.
Shouldn't it be to prevent and reduce homelessness, period? Why do we have to call out chronic homelessness?
So I, I might jump in just briefly. I think that the intent, we did, there was conversation on that day. And so I think my intent was really in, in doing the wordsmithing to, to reflect what I thought was our intent that wasn't actually incorporated into the resolution. So I, I'm not sure it's really helpful at this hour to debate that extra component. Because we did this, I remember us kind of collectively deciding that at the time. For reasons I don't think are worth getting into, but I guess I'm just trying to bracket.
There was the aspect. Sorry, Andy. Sorry.
Yeah, my recollection is that earlier we were just talking about reducing only chronic homelessness. And I was going, whoa, wait a second, we need to address homelessness in general. Because often the, the sooner you, somebody is out of housing, if you can, sooner you can get them back in housing, the greater the likelihood that they will actually be able to stabilize and keep going. So we're, you know, we're, we're, we have a broader lens on that, you know? So I think it's good the way it is. Do we have to vote on this?
Yes, we do for the minutes.
Okay.
I mean, to me, I'm okay with saying prevent and reduce homelessness, period. And that kind of incorporates all of the homelessness issues, just for ease.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just didn't want to revisit the debate. That's all.
Totally.
I am too.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to move, I'd like to move staff's version that's at the top there. I'm not going to read it all, but you got it. Teresa's got it. Good.
And remove end chronic homelessness at the end.
And we're going to just put a period there after homelessness and reduce homelessness, period. And then ace out end chronic homelessness. Broad our scope.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Councilmember Shoresman?
I will second that.
Great. Okay, we have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. And thank you for staff getting together and kind of finagling that a little bit.
Absolutely.
Okay, so lastly, we have liaison reports and communications. Just wanted to say a couple of things. First, on February 16th, Thursday, I was part of an Empowering Women panel with the Cambria University Women. And that was a perfect kickoff because I was on that panel with Capslos D. Limone. And that afternoon, we got to go onto the board and say goodbye and thank you for the last four years. And welcome in Councilmember Francis as to part of that board. And I will be sad to leave that board because it was, you know, childcare, seniors, homelessness, all the things that really are very important to me. But don't worry, I'm still volunteering at 40 Prado so it all works out. Also, that same day, we had the Student Community Liaison Committee. And we talked a great deal about the St. Patrick's Day, as well as other issues that we're all involved in. And that same day, we also got to celebrate Leah Rosenberg, the artist for the SLoma, the museum, and her artwork on the outside. It was absolutely amazing. It wasn't completely finished, so she was concerned with our celebration, but really excited. And then on Sunday, I was part of the Black Womenhood Tea that was held at Cal Poly with alumni, students and staff and faculty and community members. And it was a really great time to be able to talk about how to get marginalized individuals involved in elected office and business positions and leadership. And lastly, March 11th will be loveslow.com. You can go to loveslow.com and see the community-wide rejuvenation of the Community Wide Service Day. They are still looking for projects if you have a nonprofit that has a project, but also if you have volunteer, members who would like to be a volunteer, that's a great way to go there. So thank you. And I will move on to Councilmember Shoresman.
Yeah, so I attended my first Zone Nine meeting along with Councilmember Francis. So that was really interesting to hear all the incredible work that we've been doing with our partners in the county. And, you know, it's really a good thing that we did a lot of that creek maintenance work. It probably helped us bear the storms better than we would have otherwise. And it's still got a pretty, a little bit hairy in some places. So there's still work to be done, but it's nice to see that work pay off. And so many entities and partners grateful and appreciating that work. Also attended the general meeting for the Slow Climate Coalition on the 16th. And there, Chris Reed and I talked about the goal-setting process and how that inner, how that might impact the Slow Climate Coalition's activities going forward and where they might want to focus their energy based on some of the discussion from the goal-setting process. So it was, it was a great meeting. Lots of people. I would say there was 25 or 30 people there. So they're going strong and they've got a lot of interns and the college core folks that are doing some great work for them. And then otherwise, I hope to see other members of the community at the Celebration of Life for Keith Dunlop this weekend.
Nice. Thank you very much. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, as Mayor Stewart mentioned, it's a great honor of attending my first Capslo board meeting, which was really exciting. And there were a couple of celebrations. There was $30,000 raised for the Friends of 40 Prado from the People Helping People Needs and Wishes fundraiser, which was really awesome. And the energy program was dealing with about 1,100 work orders, helping low-income seniors with energy retrofits and utility assistance. So really going strong there. On the other side of things, they're anticipating, looking ahead to potential budget cuts, about an 8% reduction in federal funding coming to the program overall. So just making sure that we're keeping an eye on our, our local community members that are being served by these programs and making sure that we're helping to fill those gaps moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Marks?
Thank you. Yes, well, very briefly, there was a policy board meeting of 3CE, Central Coast Community Energy, our energy provider, which I attended virtually. And without going into great detail, there is a lot of turbulence and uncertainty in the market when it comes to procuring energy. So it's, it's a huge challenge that's being, that we're dealing with right now. Unfortunately, the California PUC is inclined toward policies that help PG&E and South, Southern California Gas Company, rather than the Community Choice Aggregate Organization. So it's kind of a struggle there to continue our quest to continue to improve our portfolio. And by 2030, to have 100% clean energy for everybody. And we're on track for that. The problem is that when I say uncertainty, I'm talking about financial stuff. The prices just go up and down. And there's a lot of competition there from the, the larger entities like PG&E and Southern California Gas. On the local level, I want to say that things are going forward really well in terms of 3CE staff communicating with our Board of Supervisors about the county possibly joining 3CE, which involves all kinds of timelines, data and presentation by the, our cities, by our 3CE staff. And they're doing that. They're meeting with supervisors. And I believe the item's going to come up on March 21st. March 21st is also the day that the Board of Supervisors has to look at their garbage rates, their trash collection rates. And so putting on my Integrated Waste Management Authority hat for a moment, we're doing the same thing. The staff is working out timelines and costs, benefits, and approaching county staff. And then at some point again, before the 21st, also talking individually with the supervisors so that county staff is equipped to give their Board of Supervisors a request for direction. They need to know what that direction is. And so I'm hopeful that by the 24th, that on the 21st of March, we'll find great progress in those two areas. So stay tuned. That's all I have for now.
Wonderful. I don't think Councilmember Pease is left on the Zoom. Oh, she is? Okay. Any liaison communication reports? She's shaking her head no. Okay.
Nothing. Nothing. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I hope you feel better. And we will see everyone at our next meeting, which is a special meeting, special closed session meeting, Thursday, March 2nd at 3:00 PM. Otherwise, a regular meeting will be next at March 7th at 5:30 right here in City Hall. So thank you so much and good night, everybody.